Eyes.
What are we doing first?
Give me two seconds.
Dashing through the snow in a horse open sleigh, O'er the fields we go, laughing all the way. Bells upon the tree, making spirits bright; What fun it is to laugh and sing a saying song tonight! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Dashing through the snow in a horse open sleigh, O'er the fields we go, laughing all the way. Bells upon the tree, making spirits bright; What fun it is to laugh and sing a saying song tonight! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! It came upon a very mild day, That glorious song of the Lord, From angels bearing near the earth, Till touched their hearts above. These on the earth were filled with The message of a gracious deed; The world in its holiest way To hear the angels sing. Still through the cold and sighs they cry, With peaceful ease undull; And still their heavy music flows For all the weary world. Above its sad and lonely days May live your loving peace; And evermore its faithful songs The blessed angels sing. For though the days are racing on, Thy God-blessed King of all; And with the ever-surging years Shall come the time for dawn. When the new heaven and earth shall own The gifts of peace and peace; And the whole world will sing that song Which shall the angels sing. Joy to the world, the Lord is come! Let earth receive her King! Let every heart prepare him And heavenly angels sing! And heavenly heavens, and angels sing! Joy to the earth, the signal rings! Let them sing their songs and praise! While fingers and fangs, while twigs and braid As the great joys and the joy Of the Lord, we bring with us our joy. Here rose the world into grace That makes the nations glad; The glory of the Lord is bright as the sun; The wonders of his love are ever-dawned; The wonders of his love are ever-dawned. You'd better watch out, you'd better not cry, You'd better not pout, I'm telling you why: Santa Claus is coming to town! He's making an list, checking it twice, Gonna find out who's naughty or nice; Santa Claus is coming to town! He sees you when you're sleeping, He knows when you're awake; He knows if you've been bad or good, So he'll pour goodness sake. Oh, you'd better watch out, you'd better not cry, You'd better not pout, I'm telling you why: Santa Claus is coming to town! Santa Claus is coming to town! Oh, holy night, the stars of Bethlehem shine; It is the night of the Savior's birth; On when the world is sin and error riving, To hear the King have a soul that is pure. A thrill of hope for weary world rejoicing, Though young are praised, and new are born; All our needs, all this, the angel voices; Oh, night divine, oh night, the light has dawned; Oh, night divine, oh night, oh night divine! All our needs, all this, the angel voices; Oh, night divine, oh night, the light has dawned; Oh, night divine, oh night, oh night divine! What child is this who waits to rest On Mary's lap and sleeping? Who angels sing and them speak? Our shepherds' bones are deep deep? Is this is Christ the King, Who shepherds' heart and angels sing? His face is to bring him love, The babe, the son of Mary? So bring him in since golden birth, A one and all to hold him; The King of kings, salvation brings; Let loving hearts enthrall him. Is this is Christ the King, Who shepherds' heart and angels sing? His face is to bring him love, The babe, the son of Mary? Go, tell it on the mountain, hallelujah! Over the hills and everywhere, why don't you go? Tell it on the mountain, hallelujah! That Jesus Christ is born! Our shepherds' campers watch him; Our sardines cast high night; He will help the reapers, Let children of holy light. Go, tell it on the mountain, hallelujah! Over the hills and everywhere, why don't you go? Tell it on the mountain, hallelujah! That Jesus Christ is born! Our shepherds' campers tremble; When the love of the earth Break out the angel for us, Then hail the angels to you. Go, tell it on the mountain, hallelujah! Over the hills and everywhere, why don't you go? Tell it on the mountain, hallelujah! That Jesus Christ is born! Down in the valley of the manger There the Lord Christ was born; And comes in the salvation That was set Christmas born. Go, tell it on the mountain, hallelujah! Over the hills and everywhere, why don't you go? Tell it on the mountain, hallelujah! That Jesus Christ is born! That Jesus Christ is born! That Jesus Christ is born! Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer Had a merry shining nose; And if you ever saw it, You would even say it goes. All of the other reindeer Used to laugh and call him names; They gave a look for Rudolph, Joining in his reindeer game; Then one funny Christmas scene Sent a plague to stay. Rudolph, with your nose so bright, Won't you guide my sleigh tonight? Then as the reindeer laughed in, As they shouted out with glee, Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer, You'll go down in history! You'll go down in history! We wish you a Merry Christmas! We wish you a Merry Christmas! We wish you a Merry Christmas And a Happy New Year! Good tidings we bring to you and your kin! Good tidings for Christmas And a Happy New Year! Oh, bring us some figgy pudding! Oh, bring us some figgy pudding! Oh, bring us some figgy pudding And a cup of good cheer! We won't go until we get some! We won't go until we get some! We won't go until we get some! So bring some round here! We wish you a Merry Christmas! We wish you a Merry Christmas! We wish you a Merry Christmas And a Happy New Year!
Alright.
Little cookie right this minute, but... I've got great pictures.
Some of this.
Yeah, talk about all that.
Now Dick Thomas is...
Yeah.
He might be...
Hello councilman.
Oh.
This office.
I thought you had been there.
Good morning and welcome to City Hall. Ted Wilson is the chaplain for the Oklahoma City Fire Department. He's gonna lead us in the invocation this morning. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Skip Kelly to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Would you please join me in your tradition as we pray, please? Father, we thank you for the greatest gift of this holy season, your Son, yourself, as you came in the form of man, to redeem us and to give your life for us and to pay for our sins so that we may live eternally. We pray for the folks in Newtown, Connecticut, right now, God. We of all people understand the loss of little children. We don't understand their pain. We don't understand where they are right now in their grief. But Father, as a community, we understand the loss of children. And we ask that you issue them your comfort, your peace, for where we leave off in our comforting of them and others who have lost those that they love the most in this world, who face the holiday seasons without them for the first time. We ask that you issue them your peace. Peace that passes all human understanding that'll keep their hearts and minds through you. And where we leave off on issuing that peace, that comfort, is where you pick up and hold them and caress them and pat them even deeper and longer than we can. Father, we ask that you keep today all of our city employees safe, secure, send them home to those that they love the most in this world today. But God, we also, we also ask for your guidance for our council. We ask for wisdom in all the decisions they have to make. Issue through them the right decisions. Father, use us today in some special way as a blessing to just one person. Use each person and the sound of my voice as a blessing for somebody else today. For we ask these things in Christ's holy name. Amen.
Place the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your Honor, if I could, chaplain? Just want to publicly acknowledge you and the fire department and retired firefighters again for what a great job you did on those Code for Kids program. What a fantastic way to bless people. And thank you very much for the tireless work that you and the other people put into it.
We enjoyed it. And hopefully next year we'll double our efforts and put 4,000 coats on kids. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ted. From the office of the mayor on the council agenda, we're gonna have a presentation from the Pioneer Library System. I know Ann Masters is here, and she's not alone, so all three of you come up. We have a new library serving South Oklahoma City at 134th and South Penn. And I was hesitant to acknowledge to them I've not visited this library yet, but have great intentions to get down there and see it and looking forward to this presentation. Good morning.
Thank you, thank you. Good morning, Mayor Cornet, members of council and city staff. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you briefly about the Pioneer Library System and your new Southwest Oklahoma City Public Library. This is our first time to meet with you, and I want to introduce our library system. We are acquainted with Councilman Greenwell. In fact, he has become a founding donor of our new Pioneer Library System Foundation. Good morning, Councilman. All of you are very familiar with the Metropolitan Library System, a very fine, single-county library system serving Oklahoma County. The Pioneer Library System was Oklahoma's first multi-county library system, formed in 1958. We serve Cleveland, McLean, and Potawatomi counties and are the largest of Oklahoma's six multi-county library systems. Of Oklahoma's 77 counties, only 29 have voted to provide public library support through ad valorem tax. Pioneer is the only system supported at the legal limit of six mills. The voters in our three counties approved the increase to six mills in 2008. We are pleased to have the opportunity to serve the residents of Southwest Oklahoma City in partnership with the City of City in partnership with the City of Oklahoma City through services provided at the new Southwest Oklahoma City Library. With the addition of the Southwest Oklahoma City Library, we now have 10 branch libraries. By the end of 2013, we will open our 11th, a small west-side branch in Norman. I want to convey two messages this morning. The first is to thank you and the Oklahoma City staff for the very positive experience we have had and continue to have in working with your city. From the planning process through construction, implementation, and daily operations, our experience with city staff has been exemplary. We thank you for being such a receptive and responsive partner. The second message is providing for you a brief picture of the service to the citizens of Southwest Oklahoma City provided by your new library. Southwest Oklahoma City is an interesting area. It is the city of Oklahoma City, but in Cleveland County and served by the Moore Public Schools. We began developing our connections in the area in advance of the opening. Pioneer was already serving the Moore School District through our Moore Public Library. But in 2008, we began to work with the YMCA, the South Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, and other organizations to become a recognized member of the community. The doors to the new Southwest Oklahoma City Library opened on March 1st, and from March 1st through November 30th, 137,781 people came through the doors of this new library. The parking lot is often full with customers parking in the nearby Moore-Norman Technology Center lot. The slide on the right is a view of the teen area in the library. The library is open 72 hours a week, including Sunday afternoons from 1 until 6, a very busy time. The library opened with a completely new collection of 68,000 items onsite and access to well over 700,000 items across the system. Any item on the shelf requested by a customer at one branch can be delivered within two days. We deliver to all of our branches six days a week. In addition, we have almost 50,000 downloadable items available to our customers. Between March 1st and the end of November, the Southwest Oklahoma City Library circulated 217,149 items. The Southwest Oklahoma City Library offers a public computer area, children's computers, and a computer lab, regularly offering free classes and computer use. There have been over 10,000 individual computer sessions logged since the library opened in March. Many customers bring their own laptops or other devices and make use of the library's Wi-Fi connectivity. Libraries are still about books, but we are also the place to learn and use computers and to get help in downloading eBooks and audiobooks to new eBook readers, MP3 players, iPhones, and other devices. Online tutoring is available for library customers, connecting learners live to professional tutors who can help in all subject areas, in Spanish as well as English. In addition to books and computers, the Southwest Oklahoma City Library offers programs for all ages. Since the library opened, we have offered 347 programs attended by 17,600 customers. Pioneer has developed an early literacy program that we call Growing Like a Reed, R-E-A-B. Through baby and preschool storytimes, our staff model for parents and caregivers the six early literacy skills that help prepare our children for success in school. Materials are provided free of charge to parents and daycare operators so that they can continue to use the strategies presented by library staff. Programs for school-aged children, teens, adults, and programs welcoming all ages are also offered. Everything from art exhibits to author and illustrator visits, concerts, classes in genealogy, and much more. I want to introduce today the two people with me, the real leaders in providing service to South Oklahoma City. Lisa Wells, Pioneer's Assistant Director for Library Services, who supervises all of Cleveland County, and Lisa is the one who gave you your books. Lisa was Pioneer's point person in planning the Southwest Oklahoma City Library. Prior to holding that position, she was the Moore Branch Manager, so she has many connections in Southwest Oklahoma City. Aiden has experience in the Moore and Norman libraries and lives in the neighborhood of the new library. She is truly a part of the Southwest Oklahoma City community, president-elect of Women of the South, a graduate of Leadership South, and currently a member of Leadership Oklahoma City. Lisa and Aiden, along with our Public Information Office, thought you would like to hear from some of Southwest Oklahoma City's citizens, so we will conclude our presentation with comments from library users and views of the library. The young family you will meet became reacquainted with the young father's former public librarian when he was growing up in Alva. It's a small world.
It's just a great place, from the acoustics to the aesthetics to the vending machines to the people working here. You can tell that a lot of thought was put into the construction, to what they wanted to offer as services to the community, and the importance that they have in this community. Because there's not a whole lot of places in Southwest Oklahoma City for us to go to use the computers, to, you know, just seek out lifelong learning opportunities.
Yeah, I have three children, my only one, I'm nanny, so I have a one-year-old, Aiden, and then I have an eight-year-old, a ten-year-old, and a fifteen-and-a-half-year-old, and we all use the library. We come in the summer because the kids have to read a certain amount of minutes every day, so with my teenager, she's definitely here.
Yeah, okay.
And the staff is very knowledgeable, so she likes certain kinds of books, certain kinds of stories, and there is more than happy to sit there and kind of pull out vorbives and explain them and get help her to pick what, you know, what's best for her. So it's been great for all ages.
As a mother of two, with a 15-month-old and a six-year-old, and a husband and three dogs at home, and things that constantly need to be done, I could not get it done at my house. And so finding a place like the Southwest Oklahoma City Library for me to sit down and really think, and not only think, but critically think about what I was writing, was extremely important to me, and making sure that I finished my comprehensive exam and successfully passed my comprehensive exam, which I did, and I owe a lot of that to this facility. And not only the facility, but the people within it, they are really, truly amazing people. I felt support and I felt encouraged, and I was here from nine o'clock in the morning when they opened until five o'clock when it was time for me to go pick up my kids. And I remember, you know, several times them offering me cookies, bringing me coffee, and it just felt like a little piece of home without having the distractions of home, really letting me sit and think and get my thoughts on the paper so I could finish my master's program, which is something that has never been done in my family before. So it was a huge accomplishment, not only for me, but for my extended family as well. But that's what a good library does, is it helps people, whatever their need is, to fulfill that need and to learn more about how they can help themselves meet that need.
When he first got old enough to even come here, we looked into the Growing Like a Reed program, and it's really great. We read to him at home anyway, so it just kind of gives us more stuff to do with him at home. And then we come here because it's the best place for him to socialize.
The library is very good about partnering with other organizations. They don't try to duplicate services. They're there to make sure that the community has what it needs in order to become a better community, a better society.
Well, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. The book that we've given you is our big read title for this spring, 2013, and the author, Tobias Wolf, will be attending a reception in South Oklahoma City at the home of one of our foundation board members, Jim Bowers, and we'll be sure that you all receive an invitation. Thank you very much.
Let's show our appreciation for the wonderful library staff. 134th and South Penn, and what are library hours these days?
Nine to nine, Monday through Thursday.
Okay.
Nine to eight, Friday. Nine to five, Saturday, and one to six, Sunday.
All right, nine to nine, Monday through Thursday. Nine to eight on Friday. Nine to five on Saturday.
One to six.
And one to six on Sunday, the Pioneer Library System. Thank you all for coming down.
Your Honor, may I just make a few comments? You know, they've only been, this is just their first year of being opened, and they truly have made our community a whole by their addition to Southwest Oklahoma City. They've reached out and provided needed services to older citizens, younger citizens, and everyone in between. In fact, when I was on a tour with the members of the Youth Council from Ward 5, they both said, "All of their friends," and they really have utilized this library so much more than what they've been able to in the past. Last year, we hosted the Amy Tang brunch and reception and let her speak to the residents of South Oklahoma City. They've just been a great addition to South Oklahoma City. Aiden, Lisa, the entire staff are usually at any type of community activity in South Oklahoma City. And I know I personally really do appreciate the city helping with the construction of the facility and then with the Pioneer Library System coming into South Oklahoma City, because they really did provide a need that we had in far southwest Oklahoma City. Again, they're just great, and just wanted to mention that the Pioneer Library System is this year's recipient of the Humanities Council Community Leadership Award, which will be presented later this spring. So they're a great addition, and just like the Metropolitan Library here, it really serves a need for the citizens of Oklahoma City, and we can't ever say too much about the impact of libraries and the need to continue to support them. Thank you.
And if you visit our libraries, there's people there. I mean, you know, we talk a lot about the digitization of books and how people can download them, but they're finding a lot of uses in the libraries, and it's still great learning systems for our entire families.
I wouldn't be surprised if there's a request before too long for expanding, first, the parking lot, and secondly, the facility itself. So it's really being utilized to a very large degree. Thank you.
A good problem to have. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Again, thank you all. From time to time, you hear me bragging on our employees, because I think we have some of the best employees in the country working for city government here in Oklahoma City. And it is especially tough when we lose one of our best, and that's been the case recently when Mike Di Giacomo passed away. His widow, Vaughn, is here, and he brought family, or she brought family and a few coworkers and friends. I'd like everybody to come up and show their support for Mike. We have a resolution this morning that I'd like to read as Vaughn comes forward, and then we'll talk a little bit more about Mike's service to the city.
Whereas Mike Di Giacomo was born May 19th, 1950, to Angelo and Minnie in McAllister, Oklahoma, and passed away on September 30th, 2012. Whereas Mike earned his BA in mathematics from Oklahoma State University and proudly served as a sergeant in the United States Army from 1973 through 1981. Whereas Mike worked for the City of Oklahoma City for 27 years, most recently as a street superintendent. Mike became a spokesperson for the city in times of winter weather, and Oklahoma City residents appreciated his expertise, preparedness, and professionalism for keeping the city moving when snow and ice would blanket the streets. Whereas Mike is survived by his wife, Vaughn, brother Angelo, sisters-in-law, Risa Martin, Sandy Ross, and Shirley Di Giacomo, and his beloved nieces and nephews. Whereas Mike is fondly remembered by family, friends, and coworkers as being an intelligent, generous, and caring person, always willing to take the time to talk and help others. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby extend their deepest sympathies to the family and friends of Mike Di Giacomo.
We will need a motion and a second.
Move the items.
Second. Cast your votes. And as expected, it's unanimous in our support for Mike Di Giacomo. Let's show our appreciation for the Di Giacomo family.
I just want to thank everyone for everything that they've done and the recognition. I'm so honored, and so is our family and friends, that this city feels the way that they do toward my husband. Thank you again.
Again, let's show our appreciation. We're still in the office of the mayor, and we have appointments on items 3, C, D, and E. I'll look for a motion. Comments or questions here on the appointments? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for December 11th, and item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for December 4th.
Move the items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions about the journal? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, just a couple this morning, starting on page nine under item 8D1, 8D1. Item H, 1704 Northeast 50th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner is removed. And on to page 10, under item 8E1, unsecured. Item A, 2425 West Main, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item C, 1301 Northwest 1st Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item F, 4512 Northwest 12th Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item J, 2645 Southwest 61st Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Finally, item K, 813 Northwest 109th Street, we ask that that be stricken. Again, the owner is secured.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, let's recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are nine items. Comments or questions on the MFA?
Mayor, Craig Freeman's here this morning to talk to us a little bit about the audited financial report that's in the packet. I know how much Mr. Greenwell appreciates getting these every year, and I think he'll probably appreciate that these are still being printed about four o'clock this morning. So I'm sure you've had an opportunity to do an event like that.
I've been there before, so yes, I understand.
That's comforting. The, we did put in your, at your desk, all four of the reports that were included in draft form in the doc, or in the agenda in your packets. I did want to recognize the efforts and the work of our accounting staff. Glenn Early is our controller and leads our accounting staff. This, really, the financial statements reflect a significant amount of work by employees throughout the city in different departments, but the Accounting Services Division has responsibility for compiling these statements. And then working with our auditors is BKD, we've used the last couple of years that in doing the final review. And at the end of the process, we had some last-minute adjustments that were identified, and that's really what drug this out, but it was something that was identified at the very end of the process. And so I apologize that we had to provide draft documents, but we do have the final documents now. And in those final documents, if it's okay, I'll just go ahead and just speak briefly to each one of those rather than stand up with each one that's presented. You have the MFA, the PPA, OCET, and then the city's Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And that Comprehensive Annual Financial Report combines all of the trusts. The other trust statements will be going out to the various trusts like Ocwood and OCAT and COTPA, but this combines all of the statements for all the city organizations. And so those are all included. In the final versions, you will have the auditor's opinion, that's included, that wasn't in the draft versions, and the OCET and MFA statements do not have any changes from what you had in the draft. There are a couple of changes that were on the PPA document, and in those changes, the PPA financial statements end with the CAFR. There were a few changes that were made, and in those changes, they all relate back to the depreciation of capital assets. In the PPA, the total change, the effect on total net assets is about $1.1 million or about 1% of the total net assets. So if you looked at all the combined, and actually what it did was increased our total net assets by 1%. On the CAFR, again, those changes, the changes that are in the CAFR are related On the CAFER, again, those changes, the changes that are in the CAFER are related to depreciation of capital assets. And the bottom line in that CAFER changed by about $28 million, increasing net, total net assets by about $28 million or about 1% of the total net assets. So I just wanted to explain those to you. And basically, we bring these forward to the council, and we were pushing to try to get these to the council, to present them to you because we have requirements in our bond disclosure agreements that we will post our financial statements within 180 days of the end of the fiscal year, that we'll post those financial statements to an online service that allows bondholders to be able to review our financial statements. We want to bring them to the council because we'd prefer to present those to the council prior to having them published publicly. Each one of the documents does have the auditor's opinion, which is a clean opinion that we received this year, which basically says that after their review, it reflects their opinion that the financial statements fairly reflect the financial position of the city. We also, and that's true on all the documents, one of the documents that we put in the packet that's on the consent docket for the council with the CAFER is the single audit or the A133 audit, which is the audit of our financial, of our federal grants. That one, we don't have a final version. There's no problems with it. But with all the last-minute adjustments, we got focused, the auditor's focused with our staff on getting the financial statements out. We will bring that back to the council once we have the final opinion from the auditors and final approval. But there's no concern there. It's just that that one had to be put back so we could get the financial statements out. So we'll bring that back to the council at a later time. Also, we will be meeting with the City Council Audit Committee at the next Audit Committee meeting, which I think we're going to try to schedule in January. And at that time, the auditors will be there. We will review the financial statements, do an overview of the financial statements, and talk about any audit comments that were provided where they identified issues and made recommendations for changes or for improvements. And so we'll review that with the Audit Committee at that time. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Right, yeah, Pat.
Now, I have a question on the single audit report, Greg. There were some management responses that were missing.
Right.
Will those be added into the final document?
They will be in the final document, yes, sir.
Because it would be a red flag for a young auditor in federal government.
Right. And they will definitely be there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions for Craig?
Your Honor, I would just like to make a comment that, you know, everybody is welcome to attend the Audit Committee from the council, just to get a more detailed understanding of the process. And I think these audit reports really show how large and complex the operations of the city are currently. And it's really a very challenging process to go through.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks very much. We have a motion and a second on the MFA. Any more comments or questions? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, convene as Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where there are three items. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any comments or questions on the PPA? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA, convene as Oklahoma City Environmental Systems Trust. There are three items.
Second.
Comments or questions on the EAT?
A quick question, Your Honor, on the process of buy additional, I call them big blues, but garbage disposals.
Hey, big blues is a big term.
Yeah, have we used this particular term before?
I can't answer that. Marcia's in the back room. I'm sure she can be, come on in a minute.
It's a big order, and I'm just hoping we had some experience with the company. That's just my question, Your Honor. Thank you.
That's a good question.
I think this is working. If I could just make a comment, item B is the, or item A is the final plans and specs to go out for bid for the covered arena. Oh, no.
That was the last one.
That was the last one. Sorry. Never mind. Take it back.
Marcia, on the EAT, on the, on the carts, is this a vendor we've used in the past?
Yes. And going through strenuous testing, very concerned about reliability of carts, as are all of us in our daily lives.
Okay, so we have some experience with this vendor?
Yes.
Okay, good. Because we're getting a slightly lighter version of the thing we had in Oklahoma Wind, why it's an issue sometimes.
Yes, getting strong wind testing in the same manner we've used in the past.
Thank you.
There's a real art to the carts. They put them, they take them and run them through wind tunnels and see how they withstand full, half-full, empty, and such.
Well, it can be a problem. Wind is unfortunately a strong factor in our weather patterns.
All right, ready to vote the EAT? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And Meg, did you want to make a comment on the PPA, on the arena?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I did get a little bit ahead of myself or behind myself, but I did just want to mention that this is the final specs and bids to go out for that covered arena, which is really going to be a fabulous, exciting addition out at Fair Park. I was out there last week and got to take a look at the space. And, you know, it's, again, just one more step in our improving the facilities and our ability to attract major horse events out there. So I think this is a very exciting project.
Agreed. Okay, let's adjourn the OC EAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Move the subject.
All right, are there any individual considerations?
F, U, and X.
F, U, and X.
And, Your Honor, I had a question on T.
C as in cat?
G as in cat.
All right, Ed, you want to get started with F?
Russell, do you want to talk about what this is going to?
This is, this is one of the multiple studies that we have going on in support of the comprehensive plan. And its intent is to identify where we are going with retail in the future of the city. So it looks at where the retail is now, where growth patterns are, and where we should be accommodating retail in the future. This study will be coordinated with the other ones. So we're not sure of when it wraps up. We expect it will wrap up on time, but we're going to provide an additional allowance there in case we have to blend all those together. And it takes longer.
Okay, so I just want to talk about one aspect of the scope of work and make a plea. Boyd, can you show that? I just wanted to show one slide here. This, and I can pass this out to the council, but it's, this shows, and it's a couple of years outdated, it's the most recent I could get, but this shows basically the city's public health, taking a bunch of different factors. And basically, this is only Oklahoma County, the cities in three different counties. So this is just Oklahoma County. The healthiest people are basically in yellow. The most unhealthy, where our public health epidemics are at most in crisis, is in the dark blue. If you notice, all the red circles, and you can't see it very well up there, but the red circles are convenience stores, and the blue triangles are grocery stores. And if you notice that the 10 ZIP codes in which our public health crises are at their worst, there's no blue triangles. There's no grocery stores within the entire 10 ZIP code area. And I would plead with you to make them do every, to study this, to study everything that's done in every cities across the country and to figure out how to solve this food desert issue. If you look at the density of grocery stores and convenience stores where it's yellow, it's, it's an obvious contradistinction. So please, please have them do everything they can.
That's a, that's a very good suggestion, and I believe they are doing that. One of the underpinning elements of the whole comprehensive plan is health. So that will definitely be tied into considerations when they make the recommendations.
Okay. And Ed, item U?
Can we come back to that when Kenny comes?
I think he's on his way.
Okay.
Can I, Mayor, could I at least make, ask a comment on, or ask a question on K when you get around to it?
Okay. Ed, you want to go on and do item X?
Yeah, I do. X. This is, this is trying to acquire the Santa Fe Station for Intermodal Hub. I want to acknowledge first, this has gotten national attention. It's, Sierra Club has announced this as one of the nation's most important transportation projects. We have, have we not made requests for, to enter into negotiations to acquire this property?
We have been in negotiations. We've made an offer. We've been in negotiations for quite some time.
Have they responded to your offer?
Not at this time, so we're moving to the next level.
Have they, they've, they've received federal funds to enhance the building?
Yes.
So basically, you have, you have owners of, you have taxpayer dollars that have been used to enhance the, the quality of the building or its value. You've, you've made an offer, and they haven't responded to you.
Not formally. There's been some discussions.
Okay. Well, I just, I appreciate that it's time to move on and get this resolved. On U, I wanted to, this has been in the media, and we've talked about it a little bit. I just want to under, there's one issue that's been talked about, and I was going to ask Kenny just to explain. One thing that's come up is that the council in June released Xerox from its performance bond, which we haven't, Kenny, can you explain why we did that and what was the legal strategy behind, behind doing so?
And Amy's coming up too, because she's worked extensively on this. Diane Lewis was actually the attorney on this project through the entire eight-year term of the project. She provided the options to management in March of this year on which ways would be possible to go. And obviously, one of them was to give written notice on the performance bond and try to collect against that. However, you have an eight-year contract. There had been problems with performance during the term of the contract. Essentially, we'd given them, given them extensions. ACS, now Xerox, was basically just the project manager of the project. The actual work was being done by the subcontractor. The agenda item in June with the council memo provided that all system components have been successfully implemented, with the exception of the police records management and municipal court records management. And it's been determined that that would go beyond the June 30th, 2012 date. And the amendment number two that was chosen, management made that decision, I'll let the city manager or someone for him comment in a moment, was that we would extend the contract with Xerox for an additional six months to allow time to develop assignment agreements directly with the subcontractor so they could complete the work. The city had no right to get the subcontractors on contract with us. In fact, the contract with Xerox specifically prohibited us from seeking assignments of those contracts or working directly with the subcontractors. And I believe the decision was made that it would be more beneficial to the city to complete the elements of the contract that still needed to be done by working directly with the subcontractor, because they're the ones that did the work. Instead of making it an adversarial litigation situation where we were trying to recover from the bonding company and/or ACS, because that would have put the city in an adversarial position, also with the subcontractors indirectly, because they were working for Xerox, and Xerox would have been using them to show that they had been attempting to perform the contract, that things maybe that the city had done had delayed performance. So it would have been very complicated to try to litigate that. You would have had multiple parties. We would have had to hire outside expert counsel in contract litigation as our plaintiff's counsel on that, and we would have had to pay them upfront. So we would have incurred litigation expenses that way. Then at the end, the only way we're going to, going to get our attorney fees paid is if you litigated it all the way through and won on a jury trial. They weren't going to pay your attorney fees in a settlement. They would have just given you a little bit of money. So overall, the decision was made, I believe, that instead of getting in an adversarial position with both ACS and Xerox and indirectly with the contractors, that we would be better off just trying to work directly with the contractors to complete the project.
We had a lot of policy discussions of the benefit of the, of the performance bond and the, and the thereof. There's additional costs for the extension of the performance bond. And if they didn't perform, it wasn't that they didn't have the resources. These are large companies, which is one of the reasons you would have a performance bond, is they don't have the resources to do it. It would be a matter of fact and issues about that. And I'm not sure that the performance bond would bring any benefit to us financially in the restitution of, of that type of case. I've been involved in public projects for, you know, well over 30 years, and I don't ever recall us collecting on a performance bond. It generally brings another set of attorneys to, to a litigation case. Now, there are times where performance bonds are beneficial, and they do have a hammer on the vendor. But at this point in this project, we didn't think that was, that was what would be helpful. And the additional costs thereof, which we would have to pay for, was helpful to the completion of the project.
And there are drawbacks of suing on contracts. You have situations where they can countersue against you for delay. And then, then if they end up winning the case, you get to pay all of their attorney fees too. So, you know, the city has done some litigation in the recent past where we sued on a contract thinking we were going to recover on that and get the project completed, and we actually lost. And they ended up getting $600,000 in delay damages, and we also paid their attorney fees. So there's, there is risk when you sue on a contract in particular.
Our goal is to get the projects up and running for the benefit of the public service departments. And, and we think this is the best avenue to get that, get those up and running.
All right, Pat, item C.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is just a minor question. This item provides some dollars to be spent on our bicycle program. I wonder if we couldn't get some kind of report as to the progress, how much money it's generated, if any. I don't, I'm not sure it's a legitimate role of government to provide bicycles for people, but we are doing it, and it's not a bad idea, I guess. Not a good idea, but not a bad idea. I wonder how the economics of it are working out. That's all.
All right, Skip, item K.
Yes. Mayor, I believe, Eric, would you be able to give me just a little bit of a timeframe as it relates to the, the item in reference to the last, I assume that this is the last easement that was needed to go forth with the strenuous issue at 51st and Terry?
It is. It is the last easement that's required before we can begin construction.
Okay. Well, I want to thank your staff. I know that this last citizen, the last citizen who had had to sign up on the easement was very concerned as it relates to whether or not she was giving up any of her property. They are of, you know, senior status, and they have sometimes, you know, difficulties understanding, you know, the processes of the city. So that was and had been a holdout. And Ms. Williamson and her daughter has now signed the, the easement for the rest of those citizens that live in that area who's been so dramatically affected from the flooding area. What is the benchmark as far as timeframe that we're looking at to, through this project?
So we're actually looking to use the city's unit price contracts that are already in place, so it's not going to require bidding. It's a job of a size that we can do that. So we're working out the final quantities with the contractor, and he would expect to begin work very, very early next year. So January, February timeframe, we begin work to get that remedied.
Well, I can tell you that they will be so happy to see a condition that has been so deplorable for the last probably 20 some odd years or more. And so when it rains, we will have some drainage that will not prevent people from being able to, to move in the neighborhood. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor.
Yeah, Pat, Pete?
On, on item I, a change order with regard to the city hall lawn. I don't want to have happened what happened across the street where by the time it came time to do the project, we had approved so many little minor things that none of us, or at least most of us, did not know what was going to happen. I'd like some review, perhaps not today, but exactly what it's going to look like so that at some point in time, we would, we could... so that at some point in time, we would, we could, I'd like to know what it's going to look like before we do it. I don't want another, what I consider to be a real fiasco of what happened across the street.
Ms. William has a report on Project 180 that is going to be given here in a few minutes, but the answer on the Civic Center lawn is we're going to talk about the scope of that a little bit this morning, but nothing has been designed, and I promise you, I will get you preliminary designs before it gets too far down the road.
My comment across the street is, it's nice, it's wonderful. It was done with a total lack of sensitivity to what was there before, and I don't want to see that happen again. I mean, if I'm the only one that thinks that, I want to say it loud and clear before it happens, rather than be caught in the, oh my gosh, it's going to be wonderful, because I don't, I think there is a way to do things that reflect a compassion and a concern about what's gone on before us, rather than everything has to be done with a blank slate. And I, if I'm, I just want to know beforehand, so I can say that.
So we can be fiasco-free.
Well, I mean, I just, I really think, every time I look at it, I'm disappointed. I'm disappointed because no effort has been made in my, that I can see, to do anything with the 58 pieces of historic material that was over there, except for one. We finally put the, we decided we'd put the bicentennial stuff in, but the other pieces are laying in a warehouse someplace, and I don't see any real push to try to do something with them. And they, I think a little sensitivity along the way could have incorporated them into the design. I just don't want to see that happen again.
Councilman, I think I would tend to agree. I think as we were looking at the project late last year, there were a lot of comments that were received as we were getting ready to go out for bid. But on a few of those, you know, I think that there was a lot of attention paid to those public comments regarding the bicentennial monument, which has been added back into and is complete now. I know that the-
I appreciate that, and when I looked at it, I appreciate the fact that we figured out a way to put it in there. But we shouldn't have, it shouldn't have been an afterthought, is my point.
And then I think in regard just to the other art pieces, I know that Wendell Wizenhant, Parks Director, and the Arts Commission have worked diligently to make sure that the other art pieces, which there are a number of those, are also being relocated. The Stanley Draper statue is coming back to the City Hall lawn. I know that they've worked on alternate locations for a couple of the other statues, but many of those art pieces are being returned, and, you know, that's obviously something that was heard loud and clear, and we're making sure that that happens.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Your Honor, to follow up on Pete's comments, I don't think we can present a fiasco, but at least we'll have some material to explain the fiasco. I think money we spend on this park around City Hall needs to be very carefully considered, because it's utilized by the kids who come to visit the art museum. In its current form, it's very successful. I would hate to see us do something to make it, quote, "better," unquote, and destroy that value to the kids who come here.
I think we're going to start at a base level, that we've got some really bad sidewalks at City Hall that need to be replaced, and we've got a fountain that's historically significant but is not functional at this point in time. And so those are the two things that I want to focus on, and then anything beyond that we can talk about.
Gary, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I have one, I have one more.
Okay.
But you can go, Gary can go ahead. I've already done one of them.
All right, Gary, and then back to Pete.
Just a quick question on L. This is an old fire station that we're leasing to somebody. Didn't we have somebody leasing that already?
We didn't.
And what happened to them?
I think they were offered some, it was the women fire, the motorcycle, fire department, or the firefighter motorcycle crew, and I think they were, they were still talking about a couple of other facilities. I don't know if we've made any final resolution on that or not.
I think we've been talking to them about old fire station four-
Yes, we were.
downtown, and I don't know how long that structure is going to stay, and I, they're a little bit concerned about renovating that, putting a lot more money into this facility and then having it come down again. So they're looking at something.
Well, they had done a lot of work on this station, and were they looking to get out or are we just booting them out because they want to give it to somebody else?
Councilman White, I think, had an opportunity.
That was the one I was going to talk about.
Oh, okay. This is, segue here is amazing.
We terminated their lease there. The organization that's coming in is one that is set up to try to reduce the amount of street prostitution on South Robinson, and we, I thought that was the better fit, frankly. We've offered them the opportunity, starting back when this first happened, we offered them the opportunity to move, and as Jim says, we gave them a couple of options. That's it, that's the bottom line. But I was going to, I was going to talk about it, because I'm so pleased that this other organization's moving there, which I think, thanks to the chief and some other things that have gone on on South Robinson, I think the amount of street prostitution has decreased there, at least the visible evidence of it has decreased there.
But the trafficking issue remains.
Right, exactly.
Difficult to ascertain just how serious it is, but it's out there.
Exactly, and that's what this organization is all about. This organization is a safe house, in effect, for women caught in that process, and I think it's, I think we can find another place for the motorcycle club. I want to find another place. I've told Jim from the very beginning, we need to figure out another location for them. But, you know, they may have spent a lot of money on the project, you couldn't tell it from the outside, the project, that building looks no different today than it did the day that it was leased from the outside. It may be the Taj Mahal on the inside, but on the outside, it is still unkept and not landscaped, and I'm hoping that'll change with a more proactive, neighborhood-oriented tenant.
It was my understanding, most of the money was spent getting it in the dry. It was potentially not weatherproof from meters and neglect down there, so.
I do think they spent a lot of sweat equity, invested a lot of sweat equity into the property, and they've worked hard, and the most important thing I think that they've done is really create a bond in the neighborhood. And Pete, I was down there on Saturday, they had five or six families coming by to collect, to select toys for Christmas. They have a chili event every year, and the price of admission to attend is to bring a toy. And they also collect furniture and household goods and things for families that have been impacted by fires. So it's a very worthy club, I guess you would call it, and I really would like to ask the manager to work hard to see if we can find them another location as well.
All right. With no further comments on the consent docket, I'll draw council's attention to item S, as in SAM. The city clerk has advised me that the city staff is asking that we strike three words in the second line, "single audit report," I think for reasons that Craig explained earlier, but we will need a motion on that. Okay? This is a motion and a second to strike those three words on item 6S. Cast your votes on the strike. Those words are struck. Now, let's vote on the consent docket as a whole. Are there any other comments or questions?
Just a comment, Your Honor. I'm sorry, I didn't bring this up earlier, but we have an item, item J, as in June, dealing with what's called the intelligent transportation system.
Well, reports scheduled, update, report scheduled in January for you on that.
Okay, good, thank you. I was sort of misting, and I felt that maybe I didn't explain myself clearly enough when I asked for the initial votes.
No, we, I remember I talked after the report yesterday.
All right, cast your votes on the consent docket, and it passes unanimously. Well, on the concurrence docket, this is item seven on the council agenda, there are four items. All right, sounds like we have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments or questions on the concurrence? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Now, we're on to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. We start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward Six, it's an ABC issue at 5425 South Penn. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. Is the applicant here today? Great, thank you. This is a request for an ABC Two license down at 5425 South Pennsylvania. There were no protests at the meeting, and this does conform with the OKC plan, so hearing no objections, I'd move approval.
All right, we have a motion. We have a motion and a second on item 8A1. Are there any other comments or questions? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Item 8A2 is a zoning case in Ward Two. It's an ABC issue at 1933 Northwest 23rd Street. Ed?
Do we have any protesters?
We have one person that has signed up, and they have concerns.
Maybe, sure, maybe we could have David explain the project and then hear from the protester and-
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of Sedexo. Also with me is Sam Gresham, who is the architect on this project. What we have is a little site, it's about 2,200 square foot building on the corner of Northwest 23rd in Virginia. If you will recall, if you've driven by there, at one point, this was called Blue Teak, and it was a little retail shop that OCU was utilizing for students, and that didn't make it. And so now, Sedexo is the group that runs the restaurants on campus, is going to have another concept at this location. At Planning Commission, there was some discussion about the parking issue, because on-site, we have around seven parking spaces. But because Sedexo runs the other facilities on campus, what you can see in this exhibit is there's a very large surface parking lot right here that has, I believe, in excess of 100 cars, and here's our site. And we're going to have a pedestrian walkway between the parking and our facility. So it's anticipated that there will be plenty of parking. It's also anticipated that although this will be open to the public at large, many of the people that will frequent this restaurant will be students on campus, so presumably they will be parked elsewhere and can walk to this location. So we think it'll be a good fit and a good use. As I mentioned, Sedexo runs most of the other restaurants on campus, so it'll be a natural progression for this building. And I'm here, as well as Sam, to answer any questions.
All right, thanks, David. We have one person that has signed up to speak, Jason Monford.
Okay. My name's Jason Malford, I live at 1924 Northwest 23rd. I'm here on behalf of Dr. Yang that has the property, if you've noticed up there on, I actually have a piece for him that he wrote. May I pass these out?
Sure.
He has a family practice on a piece of property, always on this professional.
If I may, I just want to read a statement briefly. Dear Donings, Zoning Commission, I'm Dr. Yang. I run a clinic, practicing family medicine at 1921 and 1921, 25 Northwest 23rd. Been at this location for about 30 years. I've seen changes and improvements in the neighborhood firsthand. He said, "I have concerns over granting the liquor license to this establishment on 1933 Northwest 23rd Street. Since patients in his practice are on a walk-in basis, he was not able to leave his practice this morning." He has one, three major concerns that he wants to mention here. First, the limited parking may result in overflow that may impact the security of his clinic, and if under the influence of alcohol. He mentions here that the, his property is just right to the east of this, and it has limited parking spots. He mentioned that there's only six to seven parking spots. He's concerned that because it's so close, there is actually a sidewalk, it's very, very close, that people are going to park in this parking spot, and there is no way that he can protect his parking whatsoever. It is just too close and too convenient. He's very concerned that especially right now in the flu season, that there is, he uses every bit of his parking lot, and there's no parking up and down Virginia from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. I know, he mentioned the sidewalk between the parking lot that's behind this resident, between his offices, there's nothing there yet. We don't know anything about that. Second, the alcohol in the proximity of the clinic may insticate a drug-related crime. He's concerned that people are going to park, because his offices are actually older homes that were built in the 20s, and they've been there, and they've been doctor's offices since the 50s, that he has a large parking area behind, and it's concealed from the street, and since people are able to park back there out of the way, and it's very, very close to this establishment, he's afraid that people are, young people are going to lorder behind the, his offices, he has no way to protect it. Being a doctor's office, he's concerned that people are going to break in looking for drugs or just hang out, and it's going to cause damages to his property. But I think, I kind of skipped over it briefly, because I know I only have three minutes, but that's basically his major concern, is that he can't protect it.
I think we ought to spend a little more time on this. So his office is just adjacent there to the, to the east?
Yes. There's actually one residence between it. He actually owns two homes, an office and his clinic.
Okay, so there's a residence, and then his office is where it says office on the-
Yes, he has approximately 14 parking spots that have been there since the 50s.
All right. And across Virginia, it says, does it say, is that REST, RES, R-E-S, is that a restaurant or residential area, the C3?
Taco Bueno is just across Virginia, and Buy for Less is there also.
Well, I was wanting to look at our design and not his.
Your Honor, that REST is the Taco Bueno on 23rd in Virginia, just right across from the subject site.
Okay. And I was a little unclear on the owner. David, is, you were using a name that I was unfamiliar with. Is this a vendor that has other properties in the area? Are they an operator, are they an owner?
They are the operator. OCU owns the building, and they will just be leasing the space, and Sedexo is the operator of the restaurants on campus, and they will be a tenant in this building.
So OCU is, is OCU also the owner of the office space that we're discussing here with this presentation, or do they just own the restaurant?
They, they just own the restaurant, but then they own the property immediately to the north, and then that's where the campus starts, and they own the bulk-
Okay, does Dr. Yang own the office building?
Yes, he owns, yes, he owns two pieces of properties there.
All right. I keep hearing you say restaurant, and it seems the doctor wants us to believe this is going to be a nightclub bar. Which one is it?
It's a restaurant, it's an ABC Two, so our, you know, our food sales have to equal a certain percentage, and the hours will be 11 to 12, so it is a restaurant, not a bar. They have a full, they have a full menu and won't operate as a bar, and that's why they apply for the ABC Two and not the Three.
Does OCU have other facilities that serve alcohol like this?
No. And OCU, like I said, OCU won't be involved other than they own the building.
They contracted out?
Right, Sedexo.
Is there anything else down 23rd where you're selling alcohol in that area? I know there's lots on 23rd, but-
Well, up Penn, I know there are several places, you have Rococo, I believe you can buy beer at Mazzio's, I'm not totally certain. At the grocery store, you can obviously buy beer. And then I think as you go further to the east, you'll have the ability to buy beer at certain restaurants, but right in that immediate vicinity, I believe this will be the first one.
Okay. Larry, did you want to say something?
Yeah, David, a couple of questions. The ABC Two would allow both beer and alcohol, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And if your map is correct, just to the north of this is a fraternity house.
Correct.
Okay? Which is in close proximity then to a place serving alcohol, and you're going to be open until midnight?
Yes, sir.
Okay? Which would seem to promote students going over there just for drinks, not just for food later on in the evening. That's pure supposition. The other question I have is, your university parking, you're going to allow customers from outside the university to park in university parking?
Yes, sir. It's, that lot, it's a relatively new lot, and it's already kind of used by, I believe, a lot of people that don't go to school there. When I was in school there, that lot did not exist, and there was a big parking problem. But they have managed that problem in the last few years. There's a new parking garage that was part of an apartment complex, and then this very big surface lot. So as I mentioned, they believe that most of the people that will utilize this will be students, but for those who don't, there'll be seven spaces on-site, and then there will be signs, and they'll be advising the public of how to, how to access this lot, and there will be a pedestrian walkway to connect the site and that parking.
I seen, it seems somewhat paradoxical to me, where in some campuses, we're having problems with students' excess drinking, for a university to put and to sponsor in effect with their building and their parking facility right next to a fraternity house for drinking. This seems a little- This seems a little paradoxical to me.
Well, I think that that'll get to, you know, the management and obviously they're not going to, they're going to do their best to not serve people who are intoxicated. And like I said, this will be a restaurant. So their food sales have to exceed the liquor sales and that's the law. And if they don't abide with that, then they're issued. But they will abide with that and this will be a restaurant.
Okay. Ed?
Has the doctor had any break-ins?
No, he's had no problems in the past.
I empathize with him as a physician. He's kind of out there. I mean, this is not a medical campus that he's in. He's out there by himself.
He also wanted to add that this is not a strip mall. It's a private area. He owns these two, he owns these two houses that have been converted or they were actually built into medical clinics back in the beginning, I guess, for as long as he could ever remember. So, I mean, it's been this way forever and he's never had any issues. So it's just, it's just the back of the area is exposed to the college and there's a lot of concealed areas to bring around, add a lot of people at the nighttime with the alcohol that he's very concerned about. It's going to incur a lot of liability on his behalf. I live across the street and I can keep a eye on it as a friend and a neighbor, but that's not really my, you know, I'm not looking to babysit his property all the time.
I think this corridor is developing. I mean, certainly there's lots of other, I mean, there's bars, much less restaurants that serve alcohol. I think most university campuses have restaurants that serve alcohol within walking distance. So I'm not that troubled that it's near a university. In fact, I'd rather have them walking than getting in their car and driving. And so I don't.
He also wanted to make, he also wanted to make it very clear that he has no problem with anybody trying to make a dollar. It's a great location. He's just concerned with the planning on it. As we watched the development, they developed the entire piece of property. They didn't leave hardly anything for parking. There was never any issue with the Blue Teak before. It was, the traffic was extremely low. It was, it was proper for the location, I think.
Okay. Well, you've had retail there that had parking requirements and I think that that, I think there's plenty of parking capacity. I'm going to move approval. I appreciate his concerns. I think if somebody wants to break in, they're going to break in. If somebody wants opiates or, I'm sure he doesn't have that in his clinic. But if somebody wants it, I'm not sure that having a restaurant there is going to increase the odds of them breaking in.
What about the problem? He wanted to voice this, that people that have been drinking alcohol parking in behind his establishment. He's going to be forced to try to protect his property and that's incurred expense that he has no benefit from this establishment.
I mean, I would think if it's a medical clinic and he's worried about break-ins, he should have alarm systems and security in place already.
Well, it's not about that. It's about all these people coming in, parking in his parking lot late at night who have been drinking next door, avoiding his parking lot because it's exposed to the street. I mean, it's kind of obvious. It's going to be an ongoing headache for him from now on.
I don't think it's going to add many people. I believe that because of the group that'll be running this, it's going to be mostly college students who are already on campus utilizing this. And I think as much as we don't want to maybe admit that college students drink, I think there's already college students on the campus that are, that are probably drinking. So I don't believe that this is going to create any sort of added exposure. And I think it is important to note that the application that we have before the council is an ABC application. So I don't believe that there are any parking requirements with ABC applications. And many times there are ABC applications that come before with zero parking. And here we have a unique ability that not only do we have seven onsite, but we have a very large parking lot that is just a few feet from the site that'll serve us. So I, there's not going to be this massive influx of people. Those people are already onsite and I don't think it'll add any exposure to this doctor's office.
I move for approval.
We have a motion in a second. Looks like a couple of lights are on. David, do you want to say?
Just one question. Could we request or require that the restaurant provide signage that points the customers to the parking that's, you know, these hundred lots, parking lots that's behind the facilities?
Yes, sir.
Could you make that as a requirement?
I have, I just have one question. This sidewalk that he spoke of, I.
Hold on. I'll let you have a final word before we vote.
You can't condition an ABC with that kind of requirement. You can ask the applicant to do it, but it, since it's an ABC application and not an SPD, you can't put that, a condition in it.
Could we get that commitment from the?
Absolutely. We will do that.
What is?
Skip. Then Meg.
What's the capacity of the restaurant?
Sixty.
Sixty?
Sixty seats.
Sixty seats. It's 2,200 square feet. So it's relatively small, but 60 seats.
Meg?
I just would like to make a comment with regard to the student body at OCU as well. I mean, that campus is utilized by a lot of older students, not just college kids, but, you know, the law school and the, and so they, it is a slightly different student body than, you know, your average undergraduate campus would be.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any other comments or questions from council? All right. I'll give you the final word before we vote.
I was just, hey, I'm going to comment. I'm an older student out there and I don't drink beer in your restaurant, so.
Okay. Noted. Yes, sir.
He mentioned the, if there is going to be a sidewalk, I haven't seen anything going in there and I don't know anything about it. Is it going to go in there? I mean, the main thing is, he understands that this is going in there, but he'd like you to at least try to accommodate your patrons. That's, I.
Yeah, we're going to put the sidewalk in. We feel it's important for the success of this building. So we'll be able to utilize land that we own to the north and we will put that pedestrian pathway. And as Councilman Green will ask, we will make sure that there's signage directing all the patrons of this establishment to where that parking is.
Okay.
Okay. You talked just long enough to get me confused. You're talking about putting a sidewalk from the restaurant back to this parking lot that you're talking about. Do the current people using the clinic, are they able to come out the back of that parking lot and go west over to Pennsylvania?
No.
So there's no car traffic that goes down where they're talking about putting a sidewalk?
There's a, there's a, what they call a green belt and since the construction is, there's been people drive-through there in the past, but we try to keep that to a nil. And they've dug a lot back in that area behind the residents adjoining, adjacent to the property and mentioned, but.
So it's not like an alley that people use to go back and forth to this parking lot?
Well, there's an, it's an alley, but right now you can't drive through it. We'd prefer people not drive through it. But it's walking access.
All right. Ready to vote? Cast your votes. Pass is eight one.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We're on item 8A3. It's also an ABC issue. This one is in Ward 8. The address is 14220 North Penn. Pat?
Thank you, your honor. This is a restaurant that's being constructed in the parking lot in front of the new Dick's Sporting Goods store on Pennsylvania. And that area at Memorial and Penn, there's a lot of restaurants out there and the majority of, probably all of them serve alcohol. This is not an exception. It's, I was out there at the groundbreaking of the Dick's Sporting Goods store and talked to the manager and he had no comments or questions about this particular project. I would vote for approval.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. We're looking at item 8A3. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this item? All right. Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Item 8A4 is a zoning case in Ward 5. The address is 10700 South May. It's currently a planned unit development and would become a new PUD. And David, we have a handful of people who have signed up to speak.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, your honor. Let's, can we have the developer come forward and make the presentation?
My name is Steve Allens. I'm with Arc Engineering Consultants representing the applicant Southwest 104th and May LLC. Our project is rezoning of 11.75 acres near Southwest 104th and May Avenue, South Oklahoma City. The current project is zoned under PUD 169, which is mostly C3 commercial use, which will allow a much higher density and much higher traffic count and much higher buildings. There's also some O1. The project, 11.75 acres, has set empty since the PUD 169 was approved and accepted back in the early 80s. We're proposing to downzone the property. 8.49 acres will be downzoned to R4 multifamily residential. The remaining 3.26 acres along May Avenue will remain C3 commercial. The R4 multifamily residential is planned for 150 units, which equates to 17.7 units per acre. 35 units per acre is what's allowed currently for R4. So we're about half the allowable density currently. The units will be two-story units, upper balcony, no upper balconies, and the development will be gated. Client believes this is the best use for the property due to the topo. The topography is pretty steep from west to east. There's also, one of the main amenities within the property as designed is a, is the green space. There's a 30-foot green belt designed along the south and east side of the property, along the existing current residential. Over the past few months, the developer has met with the surrounding homeowners, the HOA and the city of Oklahoma City several times. Many concessions have been made and are reflected in the PUD design statement that you have in front of you today. Some of the concessions include upgrades to fencing and landscaping. The developer has done a lot to work with the neighbors and make this project work for both him and the neighbors. With that said, if there are any questions or comments, we'd be happy to address those at this time.
Your honor, may I comment?
Ben Graves is also here. He is the developer and is also available for questions and would like to address the council after any citizen comment.
My comment is that a partner in the development is a young man from Norman who developed an apartment complex in Ward 8 several years ago, 178th West, adjacent to a school and residential area. And there was considerable protest there. And the developer bent over backwards to accommodate those neighbors out there to the extent that the management, the homeowners association that ran the apartment complex out there had a representative of a neighborhood in it. So they had a voice in all the decisions made. The apartment complex went in and since it's been there, there's not been a single complaint from schools adjacent to or the residential area. And so it was, it's a good-looking apartment complex. It's not so big that it dwarfs the area out there. And the developer did everything he said he was going to do in the course of building that project. So my experience with the development team, the fellow from Norman who was the principal out at one at 178th and Western, is they will make significant and genuine concessions to the public and they will do everything they promised they were going to.
Just a, I'm sorry. A very quick design question in terms of parking and garages for the units. How are they situated and where will they be?
There will be garages located along the, along the south and east sides of the property, along the 30-foot green belt, which will be landscaped with shrubs and trees. The garages will be bricked.
Okay. So they're detached? I mean, separate from the units?
No, they're separate garage.
Separate garage units?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. We have a number of people, we have a number of people that have signed up. Let's start hearing from them. Nikki Koschow? Koschan? Koschan. I'm sorry. Nikki, we, pull the microphone down if you would and then give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Nikki Koschow and I live at 2813 Southwest 107.
Okay.
I have been asked to read this on behalf of the majority of the homeowners in Hunter's Place. We are 139 homes, 63 in the legal protesting area. In October, our neighborhood received a rezoning notice for PUD 1474. We were told to successfully oppose this rezoning signature from 50% plus of the legal protesters would be required. Many factors kept us from meeting an initial deadline for the city planning meeting, but in spite of that outcome, Hunter's Place has continued to gather signatures in hopes of swaying the city council's vote. As of Friday, per the city's planning office, we had gathered 50% plus of all legal protester signatures. This included residents and surrounding businesses. In Hunter's Place, 94% of the legal protesters in Hunter's Place said they did not want this to be rezoned. The past weekend, a meeting was held, a switch, held to which not every legal protester was invited. Now, all of the sudden yesterday, we had been informed that some of the, some have recanted their votes and we no longer have the 50 point, 50% plus votes. Our question was why were there just a select few to meet with Mr. Graves at that meeting? The people who, the people who represented the legal protesters have shared all conversations that we have had with the developer to our entire group of homeowners through emails. We feel that as a homeowners association, we are being, we were initially, we have been intentionally divided. We have talked with Mr. Graves and have proposed, and he has proposed some concessions. With our talks, we have been very careful to never let him believe that anything would make us embrace a multifamily housing. Our speaking with Mr. Graves is absolutely not an endorsement for this project. This rezoning continues to be a highly emotional driven, emotionally driven subject in our neighborhood. Many of the Hunter's Place, many in Hunter's Place built their homes planning to retire there. There were guidelines and rules when we made our choices and investments and paid our taxes. Now we're being told that someone wants to change the rules and we have no choice. We feel the safety and sanctity of our homes are being challenged. Hunter's Place is a neighborhood with many older homeowners. Some have mobility and health issues and could not sell or move if they wanted to, not to mention financial limitations. For many of us, our days of working and replenishing savings and paying for extras are completely over. Our homes are paid for and they are part of our total investment plan. An important part of our total estate. In the course of this conversation with Mr. Graves, he mentioned that this apartment complex is going to be a part of his legacy that he leaves his three children. We are likewise concerned about our legacy, that we will be leaving our children and families to the value of our homes. This is not a greater good issue. What we are being asked to do is for financial gain of a select few. Please listen to the people who live in South Oklahoma City. We are asking the city council to deny PUD 1474 and keep the current zoning of O1 and C3 in place. Thank you, the homeowners of, the legal protesters and majority of Hunter's Place.
Thank you, Nikki. Ann Rogers?
And we'll need your name and address for the record.
All righty. Can you hear me? I seem to have a problem with this microphone. Is that better?
Yeah, I hear you fine.
Excuse my bad voice. It's something that's happened to me recently and I don't know how to get rid of it. I'm Ann Rogers. I live at 2821 Southwest 107th Street. My property backs directly up to this project. It will be literally in my backyard. This is my story I'm going to tell you now. In 2005, when I chose to move to South Oklahoma City from my home in 17-acre lot in Chalk Town, I wanted a home in a quiet space. I wanted my, I did my due diligence, traveling many miles and spending many hours researching subdivisions. I settled on Hunter's Place. An extra perk at that time was the vacant field behind my house. I knew that it was only a matter of time before it would be developed, but because the south end of the lot was zoned O1 for office buildings, one story, I did not feel threatened by the possibility of development. Now the land is under contract to a developer who wants to change the zoning to allow multi-story apartments, even if an eight-foot fence is built. That's not high enough to keep me from seeing the upper story of the apartments or to keep anyone on an upper story from seeing into my backyard, not only my backyard, but the entire back of my home, whereas that's where I do my living. My bedroom's back there, my family room's back there. Everything, well, not everything, obviously, but most everything I do is in the back area of my home. Nothing will block out the noise of people coming and going. Nothing will block out the noise of people coming and going, the constant motion 24/7 pretty much, and the lights of which I’ll be fully aware. I will lose the privacy, tranquility, and the feeling of being secure in my home. Hunter’s Place has become my home. I don’t want to leave. At my age and considering my current physical condition, it would place an impossible burden on me to find another home, pack my belongings, and move. Frankly, if I did want to move, I couldn’t do it at this time because of the negative impact on my finances from the current economy. Even more, I don’t want to live by multi-story apartment houses. They come packed with many issues involved when there’s hundreds of people packed into a small space. There are going to be 150 apartments, at least two people to the apartment, and some will have four people. That’s a potential for as many as 600 people back there. Multi-story apartment buildings are not in harmony with Hunter’s Place single-family homes and the other nearby suburban neighborhoods. The developer seems to be a pleasant person, but his apartments are a bad deal for Hunter’s Place, especially those of us who will be directly adjacent to the property line. I believe that my property value will drop significantly if the zoning is changed to allow multi-story apartment houses. Any prospective buyer would choose another house rather than my home, which is next to the apartments. So how do I counter this situation? I can only lower the price of my home significantly, but I can’t do that. Not only do I have my purchase price invested, but I have a large money, amount of money invested in upgrading my home. I intended to live there until I could no longer live independently. I do know that I would not buy a home that has apartment buildings in its backyard. If I had thought that when I purchased my home, that apartments would become my neighbor, I would have purchased elsewhere. It’s said you can’t fight City Hall and expect to win. Gentlemen, ladies, please prove that wrong today. Do the right thing for me and the vast majority of the Hunter’s Place residents and the surrounding neighborhoods who don’t want this either. Please deny PUD 1474 and continue with the current zoning of O1 and C3. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ann. How many stories can this be? And Ann, I’m not asking you.
I can. You go sit down. Thank you.
It’s multi-story. Is this two? Is it three? Is it five? What are we talking about?
Well, the setbacks, the height is based on the setback from the residential. The current zoning would allow it to go up to six stories, but it would be stepped back from the residential.
The current zoning.
That’s correct. They’ve limited this PUD to two stories, so that’s as high as they can go.
Not this zoning if they had R4. Correct? Or would, could that be done under the O2 and the C3?
The current is commercial, and the O1 next to the property to the south is limited to, I believe it’s 35 feet, one story, for the, of the existing zoning, because that’s office. And then north of there, it could go up to six stories, depending on the setbacks from the surrounding residential zone property.
Your Honor, this bud is requesting just a two-story complex.
Okay. And what are the setbacks in this bud?
They have a 25-foot setback from the adjoining properties. The closest building is 100 feet. The closest apartment building, the garage buildings, will be closer than that.
Okay, so the closest building to the property line of these homeowners is 100 feet?
Yes, the closest apartment building. There are garage buildings that would be closer than that.
Okay, all right. We still have some other people to come forward. Jan Kalsu.
I apologize that I have a sinus infection. I promise I did get the flu shot.
We’ll need your name and address for the record, too.
Jan Kalsu, 2825 Southwest 109th.
Okay.
And this is just kind of a little summary of where I’ve been. In 1970, my precious husband, Bob Kalsu, was killed in Vietnam. He was an All-American at OU and Rookie of the Year at Buffalo Bills. That may sound good, but we didn’t have, I had a little girl, 20-month-old daughter, and my son was born less than a day after my husband was killed. I took my, I lived with my parents, knowing that Bob and I, after he came back, would move to Buffalo, and so we did not have a place. We moved in, I took my children, and was fortunate enough to find a brand-new apartment. I moved into that, and before my son was even a year old, right outside, this is a brand-new complex, a group of men started fighting outside our window and scared me half to death for my children and me. So we sought to find a home, and I found a very nice, modest home that I was able to raise my children. And about the pre-teen years, a brand-new apartment complex came and moved in by my neighborhood. Everything’s fine for, you know, four or five years, but I don’t know if it changed ownership or what, but then all of a sudden, let me get this here, things started decreasing, and the occupants became less than desirable. With my children married, I moved to Hunter’s Place as I felt like a very nice, I felt safer there than I had where the apartments were there, in a very nice neighborhood. And I, this is all I have to call my own. My husband, yes, he played pro ball, but back then, pro ball didn’t make anything, and he only made, played one year. The one thing I may say, he was an American hero. He even had a base named after him in Iraq, but that didn’t leave the children and me with money. I just had Social Security and VA money, and we lived very, the heroes go on, but the wives, the children, had to live at a very minimum, and people don’t realize that. This is my home, and I feel like it was, it’s my little security. It’s one thing that I feel like I could have lived my senior years in.
Jan, where do you live?
2825 Southwest 109th. To think that an apartment complex, again, is wanting to build in my neighborhood, near my neighborhood, frightens me not only for my safety, but for my property value to pass on to my children, and it also frightens me for the people that, when I had my children, that they have to go through this. I beg you to reconsider as each of us in Hunter’s Place put our neighborhood in your hands. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Jan. Haining Chen.
My name is Haining Chen. My address is 2809 Southwest 108th Street. I just present some simple facts. As of Friday, last Friday, December 14th, by 5:00 p.m., we received the confirmation from LandSCROSS that we have 50 percent of the area in the legal protester, which says that we do not want the rezoning. And this pie chart shows that out of the protesters, we have 54 homes inside Hunter’s Place, and out of 54 homes, we have 51 say no, which is 94.4 percent. Can you scroll down to the next one? Thank you. So if we add all the other non-resident legal protesters, we still have 75 percent, because we have 14 non-resident legal protesters. Thanks, can you go to the next page? Thank you. And this is the mail I received from LandSCROSS. You can see that the non-resident area, which is the Y area circled by the red curve, is almost equal as the green area. So it’s a very hard task, it’s a very difficult task for we to get all the signatures, but we did, we did. We only have three homes who didn’t want to sign, and this is what we know by December 14, Friday. Can you go to the next one? Thanks. However, on Monday, yesterday, by 5, around 5:00 p.m. in the mid-afternoon, we learned that the developer, he’s good, he’s good at being, keeping informed. He met some of our residents, and then he swung their decisions. Now we are below the 50 percent. However, the below is calculated according to the area, depends on the, depends on the number of people, but still, 87 percent people say no, no, we say no to the rezoning. This is our figure. Forty-seven out of 54 families says no. Can you scroll down? Thanks. And if we account the non-resident, we still have 69 percent, which is almost 70 percent of people say no, say no. Can you go to the last one? I teach in the Oklahoma City Community College. I teach the computer science. In computer science, we have something called parietal optimal, which is also used in the economics, in the decision-making, public decision-making, which says that we should encourage each individual to pursue, to pursue their benefit. However, this pursuit of benefit should be based on the assumption that it does not hurt anybody else’s benefit. That’s called parietal optimal. Thanks. I think I have no problem of the developer pursuing his business success, success. He’s a very successful business people. However, I think his success should not be built upon the suffering of the Hunter’s Place resident, which 87 percent say no. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Taylor. We’ll need your name and address for the record.
My name is Sarah Taylor. I am a resident at 10620 South Miller Avenue in the Hunter’s Place subdivision and a member of the legal protester group. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share my support for this PUD. My name is Sarah Taylor. I am a homeowner adjacent to the area where the property in question is located. I’m a member of the legal protester group, and I’m here to share with you my support for the rezoning and the planned development and to ask for your support for it as well. When my husband and I purchased our home in Hunter’s Place in 2008, we chose this neighborhood with full awareness of the open land surrounding it and the likelihood that it would be developed in the near future. Since then, a grocery store, two fast-food restaurants, an automotive service shop, two salons, a telecommunications storefront have all been built on open property close to our home. And while a lack of sidewalks and crosswalks makes these businesses unwalkable from our home less than a half a mile away, that’s a related topic for another day. Signs noting the property in question is for sale have been up for years, and while many of my neighbors have had the luxury of enjoying that undeveloped property as an extension of their backyards and a buffer to other development in the neighborhood, development on this property was clearly inevitable. I do not believe that the zoning change, along with the development of an apartment building, will do anything to threaten the safety or quality of life in our upscale neighborhood. In fact, I live in our home sometimes by myself for months at a time. My husband is active-duty Air Force. I live there with my two small children and don’t have any concerns for safety, security of our neighborhood based on what is intended to go in that property. And I believe this not to be true because I fail to see potential problems of such a development, but because I have been thoroughly impressed with the efforts of the developer to work with our neighborhood to ensure that our concerns are heard and addressed in the plans. Initial concerns about density, privacy, and what kind of population would be served by this complex were communicated to the developer and have been addressed in their plans. They have agreed to several requests related to our concerns, increasing height of fencing, creating a mix of two- and three-bedroom apartments on the property at a density that is almost a 50 percent reduction from what the zoning allows, agreeing to not include subsidized housing in the development, and assuring us that there would be no balconies on second-floor apartments. In fact, the developer recently met with the protest committee and agreed to a number of additional concessions. This good-faith effort on the part of the developer has made it clear to me that the developer is listening to us and has addressed most, if not all, of the concerns of our neighborhood, including those formally protesting the development. Yet, those who persist in opposing the zoning change and potential development continue to argue issues of density and ensuing traffic, what kinds of people will live in these apartments, what kind of threat they might pose to our neighborhood, and what might happen if this apartment complex went to rack and ruin in the future. Concerns about the impact of density have been addressed, and in addition, city staff found that the reduction in zoning from commercial to residential actually reduces the expected traffic in the areas and was listed as a benefit in the staff review for traffic concerns. Concerns about the future of such a development can’t be foretold any more successfully than the future of any of the commercial development in our neighborhood. Concerns about what kinds of people would rent these apartments, smack of privilege, and the real questions about traffic would be better addressed through a conversation about making our neighborhood more walkable rather than excluding apartments from our neighborhood. In closing, I am a proud resident of South Oklahoma City, a proud homeowner in the Hunter’s Place addition. We bought our house with the intention of living here as long as we possibly can, retiring here, when we’re, you know, in our 30s. We bought our home here because of its proximity to the major highways, its excellent school district, the YMCA and parks nearby, the friendly neighbors, and the potential for new growth in the area. And I believe that this planned development is a positive part of that potential new growth, and understand that the developer likely chose this area for the same reasons we did. I do not believe that it will have a significant negative impact on the many positive things about our neighborhood. I would like to see this development move forward with the same level of cooperation between the developer and the neighborhood that we have seen to this point, and that’s why I’m asking you to support PUD 1474. I thank you for your time and your consideration.
All right. Jason Taylor.
Morning, Mayor, members of council. My name is Jason Taylor, and I live at 10620 South Miller Avenue. I am a homeowner of the Hunter’s Place, adjacent to the area and the property that’s in question here and within the legal protest area. Today, I’m here to share with you my support for PUD 1474, the rezoning of the planned development, and ask for your support in this as well. I did originally sign the petition opposing the rezoning and development. A neighbor approached me, asking me if I was against an apartment complex being built outside of our neighborhood, and at the time, having done the research, I was. I was asked to sign a petition, and I did. I was given no additional information at the time, such as significant concessions already made by the builder that addressed my concerns about the development. Some neighbors who were asked to sign the petition were told that there was going to be Section 8 housing available that would negatively impact our schools and lower our property values. Issues that had already been addressed by the developer with our board and were still being brought up to scare us into protesting the rezoning. I have since done additional research, learned the truth about the planned development, and have changed my mind. I ask that my name be included among those supporting the rezoning and not on the list of those opposing it. I also would like to thank the developer for meeting with us to pass additional information to us that was being withheld by the homeowners association and the small group that was not passing all the information that they were getting from the builder. I’m not an activist. I’ve never written a letter to the editor. I don’t attend rallies, but I did have to stand up and speak about this issue because I feel strongly about it, not only about my support for the rezoning of the development, but about the vocal minority who has attempted to hijack this entire process of deliberation and discussion and information sharing that was open and transparent, but that has become full of twisted information and bad faith. I have been disappointed in the efforts of the vocal minority from the neighborhood who have attempted to act on behalf of all of us. That is why I’m standing here today, asking you to support this rezoning. I thank you for your time.
All right, thanks, sir. Coming down. Is there anyone else that didn’t sign up to speak that would like to make a quick comment? Sir, come on up.
My name is Ben Graves, Architects in Partnership, Norman. We’re the architect for this project, and I’m the co-owner with Hunter Miller. Each of our families plan to continue to own this for duration. It’s not something we’re building to market and sell. Our firm has done rezoning propositions for 35 years. Our policy has always been to be very proactive in meeting with all the interested parties. As I sat here, I had developed a timeline of all the meetings we had to each person that was involved. I think there’s things that are more important to discuss, responding perhaps to some of the concerns. Also, I put together a list of the 18 items that weren’t concessions. I started out meeting with the planning department, and they gave me several things that were their preferences. They weren’t things required by the zoning. Two-story units was a preference on their part. This 30-foot setback to the parking lot and 100-foot This thirty-foot setback to the parking lot and hundred foot, and it's actually ninety-five foot to the first buildings, were things that were expressed by J.J. Chanlis. So in my first meetings, I had those things to work with. It weren't concessions. They were things we were doing to be more friendly to the neighborhood. In the first meeting with the board, which was set up by your planning commissioner, and that was following my, having met with your councilman and reviewed the plan with him. In meeting with that board, we talked about things we could do. We talked about elevating the height of the fences. We talked about quality of the buildings. We talked about security gates. We talked about a number of things that increased the value of our, our project as well as are more friendly to the community. Two days after that meeting, I was contacted about three-thirty, asked if I would attend a seven o'clock Board of Directors meeting of the property, the homeowners association. That homeowners association has changed. They did endorse this at the planning commission meeting. We developed then about fourteen or fifteen things that we incorporated into the design statement to bind, because one concern was what if you can't finance this and you don't build it? What happens when it gets sold? So we made sure in working with Lance that it was documented so that these things run with the property. So if it does get sold, the plan has to be the same. All the quality items have to be the same. The upscale things have to be the same. At the request of the councilman, we postponed, well, at the request of the councilman, we had a town hall meeting. We had a nice large crowd of probably fifty people attend at the Church of Christ. Interestingly enough, as I went through the sign-in sheet that Debbie Martin kept, later on, we only had nine people sign up that were protesters. The rest of them were generally from adjacent neighborhoods. It was presented to us that night that they had sixty people there to protest this project. And the gentleman that sort of led the band wanted to vote a show of hands early. Councilman Greenwell asked him to wait until the presentation was made. After the presentation was made, the show of hands, when he asked everyone supporting it, a few hands went up, a few more, until probably thirty or forty percent of the hands were in support of the project. Afterwards, and I did not solicit this meeting this past Sunday, after that meeting, several people came up and told me they had signed the agreement protest and that they had now supported the project after they heard in detail what we were proposing. Last week, I had a call from Brian Bobbick, who's not here. He works as a Walmart vendor. He's out of town. And Brian and his wife Toni set this meeting up this past Sunday afternoon. And we had probably fifteen or eighteen people there. It turned out that six of them had to sign the protest document. They sat down and prepared a statement and they signed it, and that was sent to your planning department early Monday morning. There was nothing divisive in the way that we handled this. It was very proactive. It was very open. We communicated with your staff here. We communicated with planning commissioner and with your councilman. I would be glad to go through the eighteen items in detail and explain to you what we've done. And these items are costly items.
I, I don't think that's necessary. Anything else you want to say?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. David?
I think we may have a couple more people. Have you signed up?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Come on forward. If, if you have something new to say, we'd love to hear from you. If you want to say the same thing other people have said, we have less patience. We, we spend a lot of time and I think council is driven more by the philosophy of this than the math, I would guess. Yes?
Well, my name is Lana Jants and I live at twenty-eight twenty-four Southwest One Hundred and Seventh Street. I'm all about the right thing being repeated. I want to make sure the facts are straight. At this meeting that was held by the Board of Directors with Ben Graves and at the planning meeting, we did not endorse what Ben Graves was doing. We said we could not oppose based on the lack of information that had come back to us from our homeowners. And we acknowledge that the signatures that have been attained over the last month have been attained after the fact. But the bottom line is, we still have a significant number of signatures of all of the legal protesters. Nothing has been withheld from the residents of Hunter's Place as far as communication. We have sent out just tons of emails. And I know that after a while, one of them starts to look like another. And if we have their email address, then they have received communication and they have been informed of the concessions that Mr. Graves has proposed. And nobody has been kept in the dark intentionally on anything here.
Okay. Thank you for coming down. All right, David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, to move this forward, this has created a lot of interest and controversy, not just within Hunter's Place, but throughout the surrounding area. And I've met with the members of the homeowners association as well with other individuals. I've talked to real estate developers in South Oklahoma City, real estate agents. I've tried to gain as much insight and information on this as possible, including meeting with various members of our planning commission. Just to kind of summarize and keep it going as quickly as possible, but it does, I think, require a little bit of additional information. This was passed by the planning commission with only one dissenting vote. And I do think it's important that at the time that was presented, information from the homeowners association was presented that may not have represented all of the homeowners. That information was further clarified. There's been a change in officers within the homeowners association. And I would agree that probably at least a very significant number would, if they had a choice, could this remain a vacant field versus allowing a, an apartment complex to be placed in, would vote to keep it a vacant field? I probably would too if I had those two choices. May I ask, do we have a map that shows the current zoning of this area in question? As far as the type of zoning, the O-one, do we have that? I've got it. I just don't know if we can.
We don't, we don't have one for the.
Okay, that's fine. If I may just say, if you look at the map that's currently up, the area that's on the east side, the part that's closest to Miller Avenue, is the part that's zoned O-one, which is single-story office space, limited to professional offices and things like that. Is that not correct?
No. It's the south side. The south side is zone O-one.
Okay.
And C-three is up on the north.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. So the area, I'm sorry, on the south side is O-one. The other area is commercial. And if I may make this comment, if you look at the retail facilities up there on, on One Hundred and Fourth Street, you'll notice there's a gas station, a car wash, and then two retail facilities. In my opinion, those are not nice, attractive retail establishments. I'm just concerned that we can continue to get similar type of that retail development, both along May Avenue and throughout One Hundred and Fourth Street. What the developer is proposing is, instead of some type of commercial establishments, which could be actually more problematic to the surrounding neighborhoods, he's offered to build a, a nice, I'm going to use the term, upscale apartment complex, limited to half of the allowable density. He's not going to allow any balconies on the second floor. The windows that may face the residents are going to be either non-transparent or they won't be allowed. I can't remember exactly which one. But the concern over looking over the fences, I think, has been addressed. Most recently, he's offered to include an eight-foot masonry fence surrounding the complex. It's a limited secured access facility. And what we're finding out as we go forward with our planning study is the demographics have changed. When I was growing up, owning a home was critical and most people wanted to do that. In today's environment, that's changing. At times, living in an apartment sounds pretty convenient for me, especially when work gets a little hectic and I'm doing the lawn care at the house myself. But I do think Mr. Graves is going to make a extremely concerted effort to become a good neighbor. And if I may, it's, I hope this is as close of a, a good analogy as I can make it. When we moved into Lake Ridge, which is just a half a mile from this area, there were two lots to the east of us that were vacant, and we enjoyed that very much. We knew though that the only way we could secure that and not allow a house to be built next to ours is to buy that vacant lot. Well, eventually, after a few years, both of those lots were developed and the one right next to us, unfortunately, at first, had a two-story design. And because of the size of the size of the lot, they took every possible inch available and got as close to the boundary as they could. So within five feet, we've got a two-story house right next to us. They've got windows. They've got balconies. My wife, probably more so than I, were, was very concerned over that and, but really, there's nothing we could do. What has happened since that time, though, is the person who built that house and is now our neighbor, has become such a great neighbor. I don't even think about the fact that they're a two-story house and we don't have a stockade fence. It's one of those iron four-foot type fences. I don't even think of the fact that they're so close to our property that there's a second story and that there's a balcony. The fact that they're such a great neighbor is the only thing I'm focusing on at this point in time. I believe this developer, Mr. Graves, will do whatever he can to become as good of a neighbor. He's offered to become a member of your neighborhood association, to listen to concerns, to address those. Again, I live half a mile. I'll constantly be monitoring this and you can always contact me. But I think this is a good reason to change the zoning. I think the prospects for other types of development that will not take into consideration the issues that have been brought forth by the neighborhood association really puts you at jeopardy. It would be easy for me to just deny this application and go along with the people who have protested it. That's the easy decision. But who I have to also look at and consider are the people who have the same concerns that I do that live in this neighborhood, that think there could be other development that doesn't have to come through us. Certain types of commercial development could come right in, the fact that it's already zoned for commercial, and be much more difficult-type neighbors. Mr. Graves has offered to assume a, a significant responsibility due to the drainage problem that this neighborhood currently is experiencing by building a detainment pond to collect all the water that does flow into this neighborhood and then allow it to be released at a later time to reduce the flooding problems that sometimes these houses experience. He's also offered to develop what I'm going to call a little bit higher or additional curbing to also collect any runoff that may occur. Any other commercial developer would not give that kind of consideration to its neighbors. They would just come in and develop this property for as little cost as possible and I think would actually create more problems than what this one is proposing. And I do think, and Mrs. Counsel, I do appreciate you coming down, and I think we all have concerns over potential problems that apartment complexes may create. And if I may, could I ask Chief City to come out just for a second? We've talked, we do have some problems in South Oklahoma City as it relates to apartment complexes. They mainly are on I-two-forty. There's a task force with the Oklahoma City Police Department that is currently working with those complexes, but not all complexes are the same. And I think Chief City might be able to better address that. Chief City, if you might, when we visited about apartment complexes in general, there are some that do have higher crime problems than others, but could you address the question about crime and apartment complexes in general?
Well, I mean, as, most apartments are run, you know, very well. I mean, the caretakers take responsibility for making sure their tenants obey the law. They have lighting. Many of them are gated, provide security. And as long as the caretakers take good care of that property, we don't have problems with those apartments. Like I said, the majority of apartments in Oklahoma City do a good job of that. There are some that don't, obviously, and when they don't, then we do have problems with, with, in those areas. But in most areas, we don't because the caretakers are responsible.
Okay. Thank you. So with that in mind, and, and here's things that made me change my decision as far as being against this. One, there is a, a problem with the flooding that's occurring, the runoff into these homes on the east side especially. And he is willing to help reduce that and incurring costs to prevent that or certainly significantly reduce that. The prospects of other commercial developments coming in based upon the current zoning could be much more problematic. If you'll notice, just on the west side of May Avenue, there's a restaurant. It's a McDonald's. When McDonald's come along, you're going to find other types of fast foods. And I'm not so sure that having a Burger King as your neighbor is any better than a gated, secure apartment complex. And nothing against Burger King. It's just that you've got people going in and out at all hours of the evening and all you have then is just your stockade fence keeping those people. Many of them, again, I don't mean to generalize, are younger, maybe perhaps louder than these residents of a secured, upscale apartment complex. Then the effort that Mr. Graves has demonstrated in trying to identify the concerns of the neighbors, working with them, again, going back to my example, I think what we should look for are potential good neighbors on any type of a zoning issue. And to me, based upon my interactions with Mr. Graves, as well as my discussions with other developers who've worked and know Mr. Graves for many years, all I get are good remarks and good comments about him. So as a result of all those items, and I do want to finally say, while the protesters may think that I've not listened to them, I certainly have. I think members of the planning commission have. I appreciate their willingness to get together and pull together and address concerns. I think that's what makes South Oklahoma City a great place to live in and I'm pleased and proud to live in there and call everybody my neighbor. We will continue to monitor this. And again, anytime there's a concern on your. We will continue to monitor this, and again, anytime there's a concern on your part, just let me know. But I, based upon all of that, I would like to recommend that we accept this motion.
Is it two seconds for me to speak?
It is. We have a motion and a second, and the motion is to rezone the property as stated. Any other comments or counsel from council? All right, cast your votes, and it passes seven-one. Should be eight-one. Eight-one. We're on item 8A5 of the council agenda. It's a zoning case in Ward Eight. The address is 1-5500 Jefferson's Garden Court. It's a simplified plan unit development, would become a new one. Pat?
Thank you, Hon. Is the applicant present? Has anybody signed up and protested? This is a relatively minor amendment. A particular piece of property has a C3 underlying base zoning and has been modified with an SPUD. It only allows two uses, a communications tower and a health club, and this will allow the health club to offer outpatient therapy as well. And it's, I'd say, a relatively minor change. This is a very active neighborhood, and I've had no calls on this one, so I'm assuming the neighbors have no problem with the additional use out there. I would move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Would anyone like to speak on item 8A5? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A6 is a zoning case in Ward Two at 8200 North May. It's our one single family, would become a new simplified plan unit development. Ed?
This has staff approval, unanimous planning, department or commission approval, and I would move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Anyone like to speak on item 8A6? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8B is a, would close a sanitary sewer easement. This is along the Bricktown Canal. It's in Ward Seven. Skip, you okay with this?
Fine.
All right. We have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 8B. Passed unanimously. Item 8C, I see the emergency in parenthesis on 8B. Do we need the emergency on that?
No, it's just optional there in case.
Okay. Item 8C, then, is a public-carrying, and this is regarding street furniture. We have one person that has signed up to speak, Rod Palmer.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Rod Palmer. I live in Ward One. I have a law practice in Dr. Shattuck Street. This ordinance that I'm speaking on here affects the whole city as it affects the street and shelter furniture throughout the city. I'm one of four bus bench contractors who presently have bus benches permitted in the city of Oklahoma City. About two weeks ago, the city announced, called a meeting, and announced that the staff of the Oklahoma Public Parking Transportation and COPTA had gotten together and that they had a plan to change the ordinances relating to bus benches, street furniture, and bus shelters, and that following those changes, they intended to add all future bus benches, which have been renamed street furniture, and other categories of street furniture and bus shelters. They intended to put all of this under a single contract that is presently owned by Tyler Outdoor Advertising. In order to do that, they had proposed a new ordinance that would substitute for the two ordinances that are being taken away. The bus bench ordinance has traditionally been in a separate category because that ordinance was not an ordinance that would require a contract with COPTA in order to obtain bus benches. In order to place all future advertising furniture and bus benches into this COPTA or into this existing contract with Tyler, they have to have an ordinance that requires contracting in order to facilitate that. Traditionally, the reason that the shelter or the bus bench ordinance has not required contracts is that there isn't a large enough cash outlay in placing bus benches on city streets for the contractor to have to cost this out over a number of years. This is changing slightly in that ADA regulations are going to require a pad and a wheelchair access to streets, I think, for future bus benches that are put out on the streets in Oklahoma City. At least, the city attorney has rendered an opinion to that effect. I don't think that these additional costs are a significant enough change to be changing Oklahoma City's ordinances and putting all future bus benches, shelters, and street furniture in one contract with one vendor. The result of this, of course, would be to prevent myself and the other two vendors besides Tyler Outdoor Advertising from participating in the future in any of these bus bench office or street furniture or bus shelter venues. There has been criticism in the past of the contract that presently exists with Tyler for 75 bus shelters. The criticism has been that it's exclusive to the extent of those 75 bus shelters and that there are no other bus shelters in the city of Oklahoma City. The criticism is that this is essentially a windfall and a monopoly on the part of the contractor that has this. Monopolies and granting exclusive franchises are addressed in the Oklahoma Constitution, and they are prohibited. Municipalities are prohibited from entering into those things. Article 18, Section 7 of the Oklahoma Constitution prohibits entering into this type of adventure. Now, the contract presently in existence with Tyler Outdoor Advertising is a 15-year contract with subsequent multiple potential renewals of 10 years. We also have another section of the Oklahoma Constitution that prohibits municipalities for contracting in excess of 25 years on such contracts. I think the legal department would have to look at that and see whether or not this complies with that contract with the renewal provisions of that contract. But I see no reason why bus benches and shelter furniture should be removed from the current ordinance. The current ordinance has served us well for years. It allows multiple contractors to participate, to the exclusion of just one contractor of being involved. It creates competition and allows people to be able to advertise on bus benches and potentially street furniture less expensively than there would be with no competition. The reason given by staff that this change is taking place is for the convenience of staff. Now, I think it's a significant thing to create a monopoly for a city to essentially, whether it is barred by the Constitution or whether it's done in a way that as a practical matter, no one else is permitted to participate. I think it's something that needs further study and further discussion, and I would request that the staff be asked to look into whether or not the costs of putting bus benches out with this additional requirement of a pad and a handicap access to the street are not low enough that the benches could continue to be permitted through the statute that does not require a multi-year contract to recover costs. This proposed statute change is the first step. The second step, as has been explained to the bus bench contractors at a meeting two weeks ago, is to bring all of, all future bus benches, street furniture, and bus shelters into this existing Tyler contract.
Rod, I know you've left your contact information. We're not voting on this today. Is it okay if council members contact you in the meantime?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, I would encourage council if they had more questions for Rod. We need to move on, Rod. If you want to, I'll give you a final word if you want to sum up your thoughts, but I think we kind of get the idea.
Well, traditionally, the ordinances have been divided up into two categories, one that has, that requires contracts, the other that doesn't. I think that the shelter furniture that requires a large cash outlay out front may appropriately be put into the same category as a bus shelter. Furniture that doesn't with a pad should remain in a bus bench ordinance and not require a permit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure, Skip.
Rod.
Rod?
Mr. Palmer.
Skip had a question for you.
I'm sorry.
I'm one of those individuals that have been questioning the issue of the location and also the aesthetics and the looks of some of the bench furniture, some of the street furniture. Would you not agree that we have, for years, failed to reevaluate the totality of the street furniture as it relates to ADA compliance, as it relates to the issue of providing some shelter from the weather for those individuals who are standing or waiting on the bus? And also the fact that, as I stated to our COPTA director, that I think that some of the bus stops are just wasted time and that we have too many stops that's almost front door stops. And so as a result of that, if you remove some of your bus stops, you obviously is going to, you obviously will remove some of the street furniture. And so I just wanted to say that because you and I know each other, and I want to be as open in reference to my concern as I can with you and not trying to side with one side or the other. It's just that I just think that there are some issues that may sound like, but in reality, I think it's that we have waited way too long to reevaluate the placement of street furniture, where it is, the bus stops, and the humanitarian issue of care for our citizens as it relates to that. And so I just wanted you to know that that's one of the concerns, those are the concerns that I have brought to Mr. Rick Kane and have also expressed the same thing to Mr. Tyler. And so I want you to know that that's one of, some of the feelings that I have about it.
If I might respond to that, when I got into this years ago, the initial plan was to have a bus bench every two blocks on the routes for the convenience of the people that were riding the bus. For a living, I'm an attorney, and my primary practice is doing social security disability cases. I tried eight of them last week. Daily, I am with people who are elderly and people who have disabilities but are not wheelchair-bound that have problems sitting for very long and definitely have problems standing for very long. I think that the, that we have, a lot of the people that ride buses need to have more bus benches out there, more street furniture out there closer to where they live. This was the original plan. Now, the plan has been deviated from by the people that have been handling it. Not only have they failed to follow the ordinance, which required annual drawings to place furniture back on the streets and benches back on the streets, the last drawing was seven years ago, but they recently did what you've suggested. They reevaluated the routes, and they removed maybe 20% of the bus, of the bus benches from the existing routes. And people may differ with me on this, but I think that people who are handicapped, who are not wheelchair-bound, would much rather have a bus bench out there, whether it's on a bus bench pad, they need a place to sit. Certainly, new bus benches going out need to be ADA compliant, but that is not a large enough cost to take, to change the ordinance and place all street furniture and bus benches with one vendor and to, for Oklahoma City to enter into long-term contracts with one contractor, no competitive bidding, an existing contract that has been in question, has been questioned in the press in the past.
That's a good question.
Any other question?
Yeah, what would be the range of revenue that you, that one would get from advertising on a bus bench?
Well, my bus benches are leased for about $350 a bench per month. I have very few, I think Tyler has the bulk of the benches with around 1,300.
Is that correct? 1,300 about the number that you have?
And I think that collectively, the other four vendors have about 120 to 125 benches. The reason for that, again, is that the ordinance hasn't been followed, there haven't been annual drawings. I've been to four annual drawings, I think, in 20 years. Each time, I've been able to get maybe 30 bus benches at that drawing. So the system, as it has been, as it's been carried out, has discriminated against the other people who did not, did not have the bulk of the benches. When I first got into it, to address your question of the looks of the street furniture, Sooner Outdoor Advertising and Tyler Outdoor Advertising were the two vendors out there at the time. They had benches that were very similar. You could hardly tell them apart. When I got into the venue, I was asked to design benches that looked very similar to the benches that they had. I did so. All of, you're complaining about how the benches look. All of my benches are built with quality materials. I even have stainless steel screws in all of my benches so that people don't get rust on them when they sit on benches. And my benches are well-maintained. One of my benches is in the material that you were furnished. It's at a Walmart store on Santa Fe, South Santa Fe.
Well, I'm wanting to stay on target here.
Can I ask Rick Kane a question here quick?
Yeah, thanks, Rod. Sure.
So, Rick, two, three thoughts. One, when I hear that, that we've got some 1,500 bus benches, and take his number of $350, and I'm trying to do the math in my head, but that sounds like about five, about half a million dollars in revenue a month. $500,000, $6 million a year. The amount that the city puts into a whole transit budget is roughly 12 million? I think it's $6 million of revenue. And so I guess the first question when I hear that is, why do we have the private sector doing this at all? $6 million of revenue, and we are massively underfunded, the lowest ridership of any major city in America. Well, I wonder why that $6 million, why we're not capturing that, and we'll talk about that more. But, Boyd, can you put, then, I wonder, when we've, have in the private sector do this, and I hear a lot about advertising, there at the end, we heard a little bit about the rider, but clearly, the primary purpose for many of these, and Skip has pointed this out last week and this week, is that they are billboards. They're not functional. They're not for the transit rider. And this, look, this one is, you know, our civic center. And this, look, this one is, is, you know, our Civic Center. This is an insult to anyone trying to, who has to get through these shrubs to get to the bus. Can you go to the next one? This is on 104th, South 104th in Santa Fe. Is that functional? I mean, or is that a billboard? Show, show the next one. This, I think this is the one Skip was talking about last week. This is a, to be frank, a sick joke. I mean, what is the, what is the person supposed to do? You, you cut the, the grass around the billboard so that everybody can see the advertising, but how are you supposed to get there without walking through the street? This is, so, so one problem I have is that we're going to grandfather in all 1,500 bus benches. I, I'm not sure that we should. Shouldn't we be looking, can you go back to that one that Skip was talking about last week? Shouldn't we be looking at the 1,500 that are currently in place and not just carte blanche, grandfather all of them in, but have them be subjected to some standards, some basic decency standards for the transit rider? I'm asking.
Okay. You know, when we, when we initiated this ordinance, we anticipated, we've got a situation out there, and part of what Mr. Palmer says, you know, I can understand and agree with him, part of it I can't. From the standpoint of trying to have something out there for people to sit on, that's how a lot of these benches came to be placed. I can't talk to the history, bus benches and the bus bench ordinance were there before I got involved with transit. You know, in my presentation last week, we spoke to a number of the problems and what, the issues that we're trying to correct. At the same time, you've asked the question about, as we have our new consultant come onboard and do the transit service analysis, is this something that we will be considering as part of that process? And it is something that we're going to ask them to do when they look at our system and make recommendations relative to bus bench placement and, and the spacing of bus benches on our routes. So it really comes down to a, a situation as we evaluated this of trying to, again, we said to grandfather these in to keep what we've got temporarily until we have a better opportunity to take a look at our system and say, what changes do we need to make from the standpoint of spacing, from the standpoint, you know, this bus bench I'm sure is there because of something that's across the street from it and, and our, in order to allow people a place to stand. We've got a number of them like this. Do we like the situation? No, we don't. The question is, what's the best way to correct it? And, and that's the challenge that we face. You know, as to why bus benches, and you were talking about the advertising on bus benches, understand the bus bench ordinance has been on the books for a long, long time. It essentially says anybody who wants to be a bus bench provider can do so as long as they get a design approved by the Public Works Director or the Engineering Department. And so there is no control in the sense of, of what goes on there, other than as it relates to the sign ordinance, which brings you back to your advertising question. So there's been very little control outside of the fact that they do need to be located along a bus route. That is the one and only issue, or the one and only control that COPPA currently has. And so as we proposed the new ordinance, those were some of the things we were trying to get to, is to put more teeth into it in ordinance where we could control location, quality, maintenance, and also provide, again, getting back to the coverage and getting back to the accessibility issues, to try to provide something better for our bus patrons than what they currently have.
Is he, I mean, he's talking about the contract. I mean, this ordinance just sets up a mechanism for a revocable permit.
Correct.
To be applied for, and that could be applied by anyone?
Actually, the revocable permit in the new ordinance is, is requested by COPPA or the Director of Public Transportation is making that request, as opposed to right now, a private individual, any of the bus bench providers would make that application. So we're trying to put a level of control over not only where they go, but the quality of what goes out there.
But are you setting up a monopoly where you have to have a contract or, I mean, it's?
Well, the ordinance speaks to a vendor. It doesn't, it doesn't specifically state that it's going to be a vendor. It just says it's going to be a vendor that's under contract with COPPA. And that gives us the ability to, again, to exercise more control over what we currently have, which is very little right now.
And again, there's nothing to preclude even us coming in, doing it ourselves, and there not being any vendors.
Not, not from the standpoint of the city wanting to do something or COPPA doing it themselves? No. It just says if you're going to be a, do it, you know, you do have to be, you will have to have a contract with COPPA.
Thank you.
Rod, I can ask a question. Rick, who decides the location of a bunch, bus bench?
Right now, the, the concept is it goes on, it has to be on a bus stop and we would, working with staff, we would identify what those locations are as we go forward.
Okay, so, so the COPPA decides where the bus benches are going to be located?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Rick? What is the schedule for this? Francis, when will this be up for a vote?
January 2nd.
All right, so January 2nd is when the council can expect to make a decision. Interested citizens or private sector interests should kind of relegate their attention toward those dates. If you'll make it quick, Rod, we're, we've been here a long time and I've given you a lot of time to speak. You'll need to go to a microphone if you're going to say anything.
One thing over the years that I've noticed that, that has been not user friendly of these bus benches is there's never been a route, the times that buses come posted at the bus stops. That needs to happen.
We agree with you.
Okay. Oh, and that, another thing, in the new ordinance.
Rod, come on, you're trying my patience here. It's always one more thing.
Okay, one more.
Rod, I had enough. Come back January, see if you'd like to speak, we'll, before the vote, I'll give you another chance. Thanks. All right, we need a motion. Do we need to vote on, let's see, we're on item 8C, so we need to vote on this, just to move it forward. Have a motion? Okay? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 8D is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any item listed under 8D? All right, nobody showed up. How about a motion and a second? Second? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Move on to unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any item listed under 8E? All right, how about a motion? And a second? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8F is a public hearing. I think Chief Bryant's going to come in and explain this is an amendment to the public safety sales tax.
It is. I believe he's on his way. This is a, I'll, I'll take this one. This is a amendment for two things. One, they lost some, a fire equipment within the last year, hit a large chemical fire, and this is to replace some of that equipment. And they're trying to recover that cost, but they still need the equipment, whether it's recovered or not. And the second is for additional funds for the, a new fire station. And?
Yes, sir. No, that, that's exactly right. Couple of things happened on the, our personal protective equipment project under the sales tax, which we had an additional recruit class, so we had to order additional PPE for those individuals that we hired. So that kind of raised our, our normal amount that, that we have budgeted under that project. And we made a chemical fire earlier this year, and a lot of the bunker gear during that chemical fire was exposed to a point that we believe that we should replace it for those firefighters. So that's what happened to raise the, the amount that we normally spend on personal protective equipment.
And you're looking for, for some recovery on that?
Yes, sir.
But regardless of whether you give recovery or not, we still need to go ahead and recover.
We know what the cost of that is, and that'll be part of the recovery that we try and make on, from that incident under our hazmat billing program. The other item, as was mentioned, was about $250,000 additional for the Station 26 project out in southwest Oklahoma City. The land was purchased some time ago. Just recently, within the last couple of weeks, approved the construction contract for that project. So just to ensure that we have adequate funding for that project, we wanted to make that adjustment to, from, from sales tax. And I'll just point out that for the PPE and this additional monies for the station project, that all comes out of the fund balance of the sales tax fund, which is very healthy right now. So, I can answer any more questions.
Any questions for the chief? Do we have a motion on this? Need a motion?
We have a second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Cast your vote. Passed unanimously. We're on to item G. It's public hearing, resolution amending the 2010 to 15 consolidated plan. Russell is here to give us a, a brief update on that.
As you know, the consolidated plan is the document that we prepare for the Department of Housing and Urban Development that describes how we allocate federal funds in accordance with their requirements. We come back every year with an update and occasionally come back with an amendment, which is before you today. The reason that we're proposing this amendment is to give us added flexibility, essentially a safety net, in terms of the allocation of some of our home funds, which were dedicated in the last consolidated plan for expenditure within the strong neighborhoods area. We have to have these funds committed by June, and this is really just a measure to provide for what we hope will not happen, but it, it's possible that we will not be able to pull those projects together before June. We were a little delayed moving forward on those projects, but we've got two proposals. We put out an RFP in July this year. We've got two proposals in November that we're currently reviewing. We have another four that we are receiving in December, and we expect to come back to the Neighborhood Conservation Committee in January to make a recommendation on which of those projects we should fund. We are very hopeful, based on a couple of the projects that we've got, that we can spend that within the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative, but our intent is to provide that flexibility for any other eligible projects outside the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative, if that needs to be the case. So it is a safety net provision.
Go ahead, Skip.
Russell, you're well aware of my, my position about this. I support anything that we can do in reference to increasing the development of some of our neighborhoods with quality development, but it is still a continued cry of mine that we have a identified plan in the geographical areas that these funds will be spent and not just letting someone come in and just do some drop housing. And I think that, you know, one of the problems that we have faced is that where we have spent money in some of these projects, it hasn't changed the face of the landscape as it was initially designed to do. And I think that's because we have failed to hold someone accountable to presenting a clear and developed landscape plan. And that is being compassionate to the neighborhood, understanding the architectural design that's there, understanding the density, and understanding the, the school components and the connection as it relates to this development. And so I just want for those individuals who have submitted RFPs or plan on submitting RFPs, this comes back to our committee, and that's going to be one of the paramount concerns that I know several of us have in reference to that. And that is to create some neighborhood development that really looks like that when we spend millions of dollars in a particular area, that it has really changed the face of that community. And don't just look like a diamond sitting out there in nowhere.
We couldn't agree more. I mean, that is the mission of the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative, so that is our intent.
All right. Any other comments or questions on 8G? All right. And Francis, do you know when we'll be voting on this? With the same date as the other?
Yes, we'll vote on the resolution today.
Okay.
On G2, we need a motion.
All right, so this motion is to modify the consolidated plan. We have a motion and a second? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8H, we're going to have Eric Winger come in and give us a presentation. This has to do with TIF 8.
And Project 180.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, and we do have an update for you this morning on Project 180 as it relates to amending the budget, some revenue changes, and really just an update from the one that we gave just about a year ago as the status of the projects. I also want to give some thanks to Brent Bryant and to Mike Clark and also Shannon Cox, as they've helped put a lot of this information together for us today, and, and of course, we'll be available for questions at the end. We look at Project 180. There's been a lot of tremendous success that we've seen in the past couple of months. A lot of streets have reopened. Our most recent reopening is Hudson Two Way as of yesterday. So continue to push forward on, on Project 180, on the amenity zones and a lot of the work. And so some of the update that I have for you is going to show some drawings and, and some of the, the recent successes. But when we look at the presentation as a whole, I'm going to briefly go over the project history, the budget, the scope of work, and also the schedule. And again, we're going to have some changes to the budget that we're going to show on some more slides here in just a moment. Looking at the history, the project began in June of 2009, and there was an implementation agreement that really helped drive a lot of the projects that had been completed to date. There were several steering committees. And realizing that the project wasn't just streetscapes, but there was also work at the Mary Botanical Gardens and the Bicentennial Park that we discussed a little earlier today. There's a lot of early work that was done, especially to create a lot of citizen involvement and citizen activity. There was a traffic study that was completed in November of 2009. This is really what started the streetscape projects. There were also a lot of streetscape design elements that were discussed and agreed to just to make sure that we had a clean, uniform, and pedestrian-friendly downtown. This is a, a slide of some of those improvements, and, and a lot of these are being located throughout, so I think that these are familiar to most of you, but in the upper left, we obviously have some of the new, the new lighting systems. We've got the new benches. We've got the new bike racks, which is the, the hoot items that you see in the lower left-hand corner, and also the new trash receptacles and cans. Some of those have also been designated for recycling. Some of the things that you're probably just getting ready to see, and there's one of these, it's located on Main Street, just a little bit east of 420 West Main, is one of the destination markers. So this is one of those artistic elements that these are being placed into the concrete, into the sidewalks. These are about the size of a manhole cover. But as you look closely, and I know that this image doesn't do it justice, but there is a grid of Oklahoma City downtown, and you'll see on this one, there is a silver marker that's located at a particular location. Around the outside edge is what was relevant in history to that specific site. And so these are going to be located throughout the downtown area, but a lot of those are now starting to be installed. Something that's a lot more visible is, of course, the new parking meters. So thanks to Rick Kane and Transit, they're working very quickly forward as we turn over streetscapes, completed parking, additional parallel parking that's downtown. You're seeing these new parking meters being installed very quickly. This is the typical section that we showed a couple of years ago, talking about what a cross-section of a street would look like. And again, just as a friendly reminder, we've got these new enhanced pedestrian zones, increasing pedestrian friendliness. We've got the use of bike lanes. Some of those are dedicated in the downtown area. Some of the others are like on sharrows, and so we'll see a combination of both. We see, of course, the advancement of on-street parking, the trees, and of course, the storefront zones as well. This is Package 1, Streetscape. This is Reno, most familiar to all of us, but it's been completed for some time now. But again, we're seeing a lot of activity in this particular area, especially near the Mary Botanical Gardens. This is Streetscape Package 2. This is Harvey. Again, one of our more urban streetscapes, but again, using sharrows for bike pedestrian access on the sides. And again, we're still able to add a lot of the tree landscapes to the downtown area as well. We look at Package 3. This is Main Street Sidewalk and the Median. Of course, this is just south of City Hall, but in the left-hand side, you'll see the use of a lot of pavers for some of the texture that we're creating in the downtown areas so that it's not all concrete elements. Also, the introduction of a lot of medians in the streets to enhance landscaping and greening up the space. As we look at Package 4, of course, this is Sheridan, Median. We also have the Hudson during the Festival of the Arts. This is the area that we have now completed a two-way conversion all the way to 13th Street. So there's still a few stop signs that are out, but the streets have been painted with a new striping that went active yesterday, and so I expect that we'll see a lot more use of that in the coming weeks. Streetscape Package 5 is the work that's currently underway. We do expect to complete this in its majority over the next few weeks and into the next month. There's the final panels of concrete that are being placed on Walker. We have a lot of the amenities on work that's wrapping up as well, but this really is the last of the original work that was, was started just a year or so ago. We look at the Mary Botanical Gardens, and this moves on from just the discussion from streetscapes. But again, we talked about beginning a lot of work with the Mary Gardens Foundation, improving programming of the park, enhancing it for visitors. There's been a, a wide range of use of the new children's garden, but of course, there's also the dog- also the dog release areas, the rentable spaces, the band shell, the restaurant, and also the water features. This is one of the water features on that left-hand side, and then, of course, I think one of our most active areas is the children's garden that you see here on the right. The ice shrink is ready to go. Obviously, it's been used for a number of weeks as a part of the downtown and December events, and so we're seeing that used daily. Of course, it's very active in the evenings. This is a band shell that is on the right. The Bicentennial Park was also one of those projects that was included, and it's nearly complete. It's in the final punch list stages, and so if you were to look at that park today, you'll see that it's nearly in its completed form. But again, one of those goals was to focus its central connection between City Hall and the Civic Center. It has the grand lawn, the historic grand lawn with a stage, pavilions, a fountain, and of course, it has a majority of updated landscaping and lighting. This is what that original concept plan looked like about a year ago when we started construction. And again, you'll see the grand lawn in the center. You'll see the sweeping elements that provide for a lot of artistic opportunities. They treat these as galleries, these sweeping areas. The Bicentennial Monument has been located in the upper left-hand portion of this drawing, just near the Civic Center. But again, with the new fountain, the stage, there's a tremendous amount of opportunity that's going to be attracted to this new park. On the left is a nighttime photo of that new water feature. This is that water feature that's up close to the front door of Civic Center. It is animated to music, and obviously, it creates a nice atmosphere. On the right, you can see a lot of the completed landscaping before fall hit and into winter. So as we progress from the historical perspective of Project 180, I move into this slide, and this, of course, is a map of our downtown area. Everything that you see in blue is either a completed or nearly completed project. So this is Packages One through Five, and we've made a tremendous amount of progress. We've also, at the lower center, the green area, that's the Mary Botanical Gardens. On the middle left, you'll see the green block as the Bicentennial Park. Now, we did not complete the City Hall Lawn project. You recall that that was an add alternate to the Bicentennial project that we chose to look at in the future. So that's something that we'll talk about in just a moment, but a lot of work has been done on Project 180. When we speak about the next phase, we're looking at a series of projects: Streetscape Package Six, Streetscape Package Seven, the Pedestrian Plaza, City Hall Lawn, and the McGee Center. As a part of the revenue, a part of the item that you're considering today is adjustments to that revenue. We've developed, at least for this slide's purposes, two categories of those items. We've got the non-trust funds, the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust Funds, the trust funds for the total funds available. You'll see the breakdown in the non-trust funds. It still is funded with the GO bond at about $39.5 million. Aqua funds for $11.7. Remembering that the utility has gone in when we have the streetscapes opened up. There's an opportunity to replace water or sewer and enhance our infrastructure that's being done in conjunction with Project 180. We look at the other category. There are some CIP funds that are about $2.2 million. There's a $750,000 grant that was received for a portion of EK Gaylord. There's also a donation by Devon towards the Bicentennial Park that's included in that other category. We look at the trust funds. The majority of that, of course, is the Devon loan proceeds at $95 million, but there's also some TIF 8 funds as well. Sales tax and also that other category that's made up of some interest and some other items, but the total funding available is $176 million. We look at the budget. I'm actually going to start from the bottom and go up, but the budget that we proposed matches that revenue also at $176 million. But if you now draw your attention to the top of that slide, you'll see that there were the administrative projects. These would be the consulting contract for the Mary Botanical Gardens and the streetscapes. That's at $21.6 million. If you look at the completed projects and the projects that are under construction, these would be the photographs that I showed you earlier with the gardens, the streetscapes, the Bicentennial Park, $118 million that's been expended. And then the projects that we'd like to put under design quickly is Package Six at $13 million, Package Seven at $11.7 million, Pedestrian Plaza, City Hall Lawn, McGee Center, and then, of course, maintaining a program contingency for about $36 million in additional work. To describe those projects that are being proposed, McGee Center, this is an area that's located in the lower level of the Mary Botanical Gardens. The upper-left photo shows that condition today. It was an element of the gardens project that was not included in the original construction. On the lower right is some of those completed areas. Simply what we were proposing is that we go forward and finish out this lower-level space that's public. There's restrooms, there's an elevator access, there's also some HVAC needs, some heating and cooling needs that need to be addressed. That project is one that, of course, we'd like to move forward on at about $350,000. The streetscapes are Packages Six and Seven. Similar streetscapes, as we've seen in the past, with the same amenity zones, using the same details, moving those forward. This is a rendering of what that might look like. There were some other renderings that we shared with the general public earlier, and this is a rendering of Walker Avenue of what it will look like when it's completed. But Streetscape Six is $13 million, and Streetscape Seven is $11.7 million. The Pedestrian Plaza is an area that's bound on the upper side of this drawing, Park Avenue. On the left, Harvey Avenue. On the right, Robinson Avenue. And on the lower portion, you'll see the new Devon facility. Everything that you see in a orange or a green color is proposed as pedestrian improvements. This is an area that's currently owned by the Urban Renewal Authority. We're seeing a lot of activity in this space. We're recommending a starting point of this budget at $4 million. Now, that's a total cost that would include all engineering, that would include all construction and all contingency. We don't have plans completed on this, so it's hard to describe what that might look like today, but that would be something that we'd come back before this council, as would any design project, to make presentations to have you have a better understanding of what that project might look like. As we look at the City Hall Lawn project, this is the piece of the Bicentennial project that was not forwarded. I have shown the original rendering of City Hall Lawn here. We would not anticipate completely removing all the landscaping from City Hall Lawn. Obviously, this is a part of campus, or at least the City Hall site was one that was recently renovated with a lot of landscaping. But conceptually, there would be the idea that we could bring some of the elements across the street. So if you were to look at the left-hand side of this drawing, you can see some of the horizontal bands or the bars that are created there. Those would be very similar to what would be at the park. Obviously, as Jim mentioned earlier in the meeting, making sure that we renovate the fountain, that we upgrade the sidewalks, that we encourage ADA accessibility, those would be our primary focus. And so I would take this as a starting point, but again, as a design that we would bring back to you for further consideration, it would not completely raise the City Hall site. We would use much of what's already here. That project is estimated at approximately $2.2 million. As we have done on Project 180 and as we presented last year, one of the things that we've included in the budget is project contingency to ensure that we can complete the projects as described. We're also including a program contingency. Every once in a while, there is some unforeseen's that do come up that a project can't absorb, and we don't want to take away funding from other projects. And so we are proposing that we use the strategy of proceeding with both project level and program contingencies on all the projects. This is a map that shows the completed projects in blue again, but what I've added is the yellow and the brown. I think what you'll find with the yellow and the brown is that it's similar to the map that you might have seen about a year ago when we were talking about Package Six and future projects. But with this revised budget, we can actually complete Six and now actually declare a Package Seven. Six is the areas that are identified in yellow. Some of the strategy with the yellow, as I mentioned earlier, around EK Gaylord, there was a $750,000 grant that was received there. We really need to proceed with that quickly because there is a time constraint on expending those grant funds. In the upper right-hand side, you'll see the Sandridge Campus around Kerr Avenue. They are already beginning work on the Kerr site, Sandridge site, I'm sorry, and we'd like to align our project with theirs so that we can complete the streetscape with the Sandridge improvements. And so that's some of the reasoning behind why you see these projects going in the order that is being suggested. Now, we had a lot of lessons learned on previous Packages One through Five. One of the things that we learned is that it's not prudent to allow a contractor to go after all 10 blocks at once. And so what we would propose to you as a part of going forward with Package Six and Package Seven is that we would adopt a two-to-three-block construction concept where we would actually have the contractor put up concrete barricades. We'd return some of the separation between pedestrians and construction to allow ease of access in and out of businesses. Once a contractor finished a two- or three-block section, then they would be able to proceed in the next two or three blocks. And so we would expect this to be phased much tighter with a more stringent schedule, something that we have to work on very closely with the engineers and the contractors moving forward. The schedule for the projects, although I don't have completion dates, those would need to be determined. Here, as we work with engineers and contractors, again, we're confident on the McGee Center. That's a project that's very small. It's one that we're familiar with, but we could start that construction in the spring of '13. On Streetscape Package Six, our early indications are that we could complete the design in about six months and have that out to bid in the summer of '13. I would anticipate something on the order of magnitude 18 or 20 months to complete an individual Streetscape package, but we're going to, again, have to closely phase those with the idea that we wouldn't take out parallel streets. We wouldn't take out a Walker and a Hudson at the same time. We need to work very closely to make sure that we're minimizing that impact to our downtown patrons. Pedestrian Plaza is one that we think we could move quickly forward and have that ready for bid in the fall of '13. You'll see Streetscape Seven not until winter. Again, part of the strategy there is to phase it with about a six-month delay after Package Six. And then the last one is the City Hall Lawn, and I know it may raise a question, why wait till spring of '14? I think most of you are familiar. We have a parking garage project that's going to go under construction this spring, just south of City Hall. We don't want to have two contractors adjacent to each other at the same time, so we would purposely align the construction of a City Hall Lawn project after the garage was substantially completed.
And just to go on top, just to further that point, it's probably anticipated that because of the tight site to build that parking garage, it's probably going to need a crane, and that crane base is probably going to be sitting in City Hall across the street just to accommodate, to make that work. So we don't want to do parking or City Hall improvements and then have that impacted by the construction of the garage.
So as I wrap up and get ready for questions, I mean, we've taken a lot of time here over the past several months to make sure that we establish a budget. We've made sure that we've worked through a lot of the questions on the revenue, and so the item I know that you're considering today is looking at both of those. We wanted to bring this presentation to share some of the good successes that we're starting to realize on Project 180. I think we have a very good plan as we get ready to want to move forward with your vote of confidence, and with that, I can answer any questions that you might have.
All right, questions for Eric? I have one, Eric, and you touched on it at the end. I guess it's, I'd ask you to elaborate just philosophically. It seems, and nothing personal, nobody's made more mistakes than I have, but we learn from some mistakes and we don't learn from others, and that's, I'm just asking, as we go forward, if we were to do something in the future, what do you think about, what were the consequences of trying to take on so many different streetscapes at the same time, both in terms of cost and economic development, economic impact to downtown? You touched on it, but I'd just ask you to elaborate as we go forward in the future.
Absolutely. I mean, I think there's several lessons learned in the early Streetscape projects. I mean, those are the ones that have had the most impact to our driving public, our walking public, and our businesses. And I think, as I proposed, as we look at the projects, even though they might expand across downtown, is that we complete them in much shorter segments. So impact the least, allow the contractors to focus the most on that two- or three-block section, there will be inconvenience. I mean, that's something that's going to be unavoidable, but we want to do a better job with that by creating that barrier between construction and the pedestrian, making sure that we've got that free flow of pedestrian outside of construction to businesses, although that block might be closed for traffic. But encourage signage, better signage, more public involvement, and at least as we go out and move forward, we get the schedule ready and we have a better idea of when we're going to start and finish, but coordinate that. But I think the bigger thing will be is that we can focus on smaller areas as opposed to larger areas, which will help with that concentration and that effort.
I can add a couple of things to that, Councilman. First of all, we did five Streetscape projects that were fairly massive over a three-year period, and now we're looking at doing a two-year, or two projects over two years, so it's a lesser impact. But what complicated that were other projects going on at the same time we were doing those five Streetscape projects. Sheridan was shut down for well over a year, maybe close to two years, to accommodate the construction of the Devon Tower. We have Robinson shut down to accommodate the construction that was added on to the side of the Chesapeake Arena. Sandridge has and still has Kerr shut down for a block or two on the south side of their property. There were some other construction projects. Kerr was shut down further to the east due to the construction of the level. And then because of the massive amount of utility relocation that we did to accommodate those five Streetscape projects, a sundry street was shut down to get infrastructure in, utility infrastructure in, for those improvements. TriGen may have had to run a line, you know, they're going to replace much what they needed in previous capacity, so they had a couple of other sidelines, or fiber optics needed to be brought in from around to tie into the stuff that we were doing with those five Streetscape projects. So there were more utility relocations done as part of that. So there was just a lot going on. From the Project 180 standpoint, you know, you look ahead and we're doing two Streetscapes over three years, that appears to be manageable, but there are still other things going on. Sandridge is still doing things to their complex over there, which is going to impact traffic flow in that area. And we're going to start doing some things on Project, on MAP 3, that are going to continue to impact, whether it's construction of the park, or whether it's beginning the convention center down the line, or even building the boulevard. All of those are going to have continued impact on downtown Oklahoma City. And I know that sounds harsh that there's that much going on, but I would point out that we're very fortunate. There are very few cities that have this type of infrastructure activity going on.
Absolutely, and I still, and I think that's, I mean, in the years and decades, I mean, we may all be gone, but you could have another tower built, and you could have streets shut down further concern, and you could have a lot of the things you just outlined happen again, and somebody may want a similar kind of arrangement. I just hope that some of this is documented and passed on to future decision-makers. The second I would ask is about EK Gaylord. The part outlined is right in front of the intermodal hub. We have a $750,000 federal grant. What is the nature of those improvement? What is the nature of that Streetscape next to the intermodal hub, and is there anything else being done on Gaylord?
At this point, it's really just the Streetscape portion. Earlier in the agenda, there was an action item to proceed with the acquisition of the Santa Fe site, but obviously, there's going to be some coordinated efforts between Project 180 and MAP 3 as we decide how that's going to look. But there's a lot of MAP 3 work yet to happen at the intermodal hub. You know, we may have to make some educated guesses on where that would stand, but I think as we look at the street, and we're looking at, again, sidewalks, we're looking at street enhancements, we're going to look at all those things, for the most part sidewalk to sidewalk, but we're not going to get behind that sidewalk much. That'll be more of a MAP 3 project.
So the $750,000 federal grant is, for what purpose?
It's for the street.
Just any improvement?
For Streetscape.
For Streetscape, okay.
So we will combine it with other Project 180 funds. The $750 is not enough to complete that project by itself. Generally speaking, the 180 enhancements have cost, with utility relocations included, about $1 million a block.
Okay.
And not all streets are equal, but I mean, just generally, if you're looking for a general cost. And that's about a two-block section there of Gaylord from Reno to Sheridan.
And that's just our cost? That didn't include the utility movements, does it?
The utilities is in that $1 million a block.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Well, our utility relocation, it's not OGNEs or ONGs or Congress or any of the others.
No, the private, it is not.
So that's what I was referring to.
Yeah, there's multi-million dollars.
So it's more than $1 million a block when you include the private sector money that comes with it?
You're correct, city cost. City costs have been, on average, about $1 million a block.
Larry?
But just to be, my clarification, when electric lines have to be relocated or gas lines, the utility funds those?
Yes, they have. We have participated in a few instances where we've had critical schedules and we've had to get ahead of them. A lot of times, it's better for those utilities. They would like to plan a year or two ahead, but we've had some critical things come up. We've participated in some smaller projects for them.
But for the lion's share, the utilities themselves would pay for their own expenses.
Can I ask a question of Kathy O'Connor? I just want to ask, you know, one controversy about these kind of TIFs is what happens to the public schools and libraries where maybe the money would have gone but for these? One thing that I've been surprised to find out is that there, I guess there are monies available to the schools and presumably libraries that haven't been claimed. Can you talk about that process? What money from maybe the downtown TIF and this TIF?
Sure. In both TIF Two, which is the downtown TIF that was created in about 2001, and in TIF Eight, which is the Devon Headquarters TIF, the city set aside money in the project plan that was adopted by city council for the other taxing jurisdictions. And so what that term means is it's money set aside for the other jurisdictions that use property taxes as a part of their operations. So it's the school district, the VOTEC, the library, the city county health department, am I skipping? County, and the county government. And so in the first one, we set aside money in TIF Two for public schools, public parking, and then other public improvements. There were three different categories. In TIF Eight, it's all lumped into one category just for the other taxing jurisdictions. And that item isn't, there's an amendment to the project plan for TIF Eight that will be brought before you later, but the process for that requires that we take that amendment to the planning commission first. So it will come to the city council in a few weeks.
But Kathy, those taxing agencies need to spend that money within the boundaries of the original TIF Two for both TIF Two and TIF Eight.
Right. They need to spend the money in the original project area, which for both the TIF districts is northwest Thirteenth Street to southwest Twenty-seventh, I-235 to Classen. So a pretty big project area. So far, most of the other taxing jurisdictions have not made many requests of that funding. We have worked with the Oklahoma City Public Schools on the downtown elementary school, and the VOTEC District on a small project. And I think we worked with Oklahoma City Community College on a small project in Capitol Hill as well.
So roughly how much money in unclaimed funds is there?
We don't have to get back with you on that. In TIF Eight, none of it's been allocated yet, because the requirement was that we complete all of the public improvements before we can, or the priority public improvements, which is really a subset.
Well, we do have a number at this point in time that's anticipated to be available for the other taxing agencies, and that's twenty?
Twelve million.
It's twelve, I'm sorry.
Yeah, twelve million, yeah.
And we did also, by the way, on TIF Two authorize an expenditure for the school district when they were attempting to procure the Old Central High School. But that was failed, and so that wasn't used. But that was another attempt, another use of those dollars, or allocation of those dollars. Now, we've been put back.
So perhaps in a future meeting with the school board, we might bring up that twelve million dollars?
Sure. They were in a meeting of the TIF Review Committee last week when this was discussed. So they know that that money's available.
Oh, and have known that.
And they have, yeah.
We've been in multiple conversations.
Okay. All right.
Real quick, Eric, on the completed or under construction, the pedestrian corridor, eight-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand, where is that?
I'm sorry.
The pedestrian corridor, where is that?
It's just, can we pull that slide back up, Shannon?
Are the existing, the dollars that have been spent?
Oh, pedestrian corridor. I'm sorry, I'm thinking, okay.
I know where the plaza is, but the pedestrian corridor?
It's in the east garage, second floor. Basically creates a conditioned space for access directly into the Devon Building from parking.
And from Oklahoma Tower.
And from Oklahoma Tower. So it's the second floor. It was built inside the existing garage, so you might not have seen it. I've got a photo I could share, but some of the existing holes were filled in with windows, so it's actually very hard to find unless you see the new glass that was installed into the existing garage on the east side. So it's the east garage, second floor.
Okay. Going into Oklahoma Tower?
Yes.
Okay. Eric Wallop, got you here. What's the status on the underground? It's been partially closed for a while. I don't know that it's open now or not.
I don't know.
It wasn't the other day.
Yeah.
I don't know either.
I think that's due to Sandridge's construction. I think they, it's done by Sandridge. Yeah, it's due to Sandridge's.
Yeah. Could we get, could you give me some timetable on that?
Sure.
See, I could do that. Close a long time. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
We're on to item eight I, and this authorizes the permanent debt.
Let's move on.
That's right. We didn't vote on eight H, do we? All right, we have a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Now to eight I, and this authorizes the permanent debt for the Development Trust.
That's correct. And that's been through the Devon Implementation Committee and the Economic Development Trust. Okay?
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight J, this has to do with a
Salary continuation.
No?
No, 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 I'm sorry.
Moving a building on to the list of National Registry of Historic Places. Ed, I can't imagine you don't want to say something here. You live there.
First, let me say that I'm absolutely conflicted about. I mean, I have off-the-charts conflicts. So when we vote, I'm going to put it on abstain and walk out.
All right, we're going to vote.
Let me just say how much I love this building. It's clearly, I mean, how could it not be iconic? It's a decagon, for heaven's sake. It's unique. It and Baptist Hospital completely transformed that area when it was built in 1964. And a lot of the unique characteristics are outlined in the city staff report. The top, it was one of the only cities that has a rotating restaurant, whether it was the Chandel Club, or Eagles Nest, or Nix. Where the food, maybe it wasn't all that great, but the view was great. My mother's still sad about Queen Anne's Cafeteria when it's gone. She's kind of slumps in sadness. Just so many people have so many memories of this building. And two, you could build a lead platinum, ultra-platinum building, and it wouldn't be as sustainable as if you take an existing building, put all-new infrastructure in it, and revive it. And that's what they did here. The only, there's some unusual things about the application in terms of the number of years and the timing of it, and I'll leave that to you to read through the city staff report and decide. I do just, as an education, I just want to point out, because I'm not sure that maybe our planning and historic preservation committee understand, that there are consequences if you, in this particular case, developers came in and they looked at the building, they studied it, and they decided that they couldn't get historic tax credits. So they gave up on it and they did some things. They changed the blue glass, which everybody remembers, to a green glass. They changed the lobby. They did some things that you wouldn't do if you were applying for historic tax credits, and they sold some units. I think the lesson for future projects is that you can only get tax credits for the portion of the building that's leased and not sold. And I don't understand the reason for that, and I've asked the Department of Interior to manage these, and I don't really understand it. But the point is, is that if you do a project like this, you lease 75% of the building, and you sell 25% of the building, you can only get 75% of the tax credits. And so if you sell the units, and then two years later, which is what happened in this case, two years later, you reverse course and decide to go for historic tax credits, it introduces some complexity. Now you're going to have to lease the units as opposed to sell them to get those tax credits. And I just hope that our planning department and our historic preservation commission remember that point for the future. Thank you.
Your Honor, I have a couple of questions. Has the owner of this building signed off on this particular?
The owner is the applicant.
Okay, good. The second question is, the action that we're taking this morning, what restrictions, if any, does it place on the use of the building?
It really doesn't place any at all. They are doing it, as Councilman Shadid said, to secure the tax credits. They will have to keep the building in compliance with the actions that they took, the remodeling that they did. They will have to adhere to that, I think it's ten years, before they could do something else.
Okay, so there are some restrictions on the use?
Yeah. But they've gone into that willingly, understanding that.
Okay, so the owner understands that
Yes.
There will be restrictions.
Virtually all of the, well, I can't say all, but most of the applications that we get for nominations for National Register are by the applicants.
It doesn't have to be, though?
Right, doesn't have to be.
Thank you.
Right.
But the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Is the primary purpose, oh, I see, it shouldn't be the primary purpose, but one of the main purposes of this is to be able to qualify for tax credits?
That's correct. They'll have to correct some of the modifications that they've already made. And I think the primary modification is going to be the glass. They took out that original glass and they replaced it with that green tinted glass. They've got to go back and replace the green tinted glass with something that meets the original in appearance. They should have done it at the beginning. I mean, this is a little unusual, this one. They did the work, and then they decided to apply for the credits, which meant that they had to go back and redo some of the, redo some of it.
Is the success of this application tied to their doing this glass replacement?
I mean, I can't comment on their bottom-line approach, but to them, it's worth doing.
Okay. But they have to do it in order to have this building declared a historic place?
Yes.
Have to replace the glass?
Yes.
Thank you.
I've always understood age was a primary factor in historic register. I mean, this building doesn't qualify for age, does it?
I think it is fifty years old. But it's not the primary determinant. When we put, when the Gold Dome was placed on there, it was not, at that point in time, fifty years old. So it doesn't have to be age. Eight, at fifty years, when it hits fifty years, then it becomes automatically, you can consider it under those circumstances. But it doesn't have to be. It has some other architectural significance.
All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes on eight J. Passed unanimously. Item eight K, understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
How about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight L, understand we do need executive session?
We'll need a short one.
Okay. How about a motion then to move that to executive session? Cast your votes. That item moves to executive session. Item eight M, is claims recommended for denial? Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under eight M? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item nine, is claims recommended for approval? Is anyone here wishing to speak under the item listed under claim recommended for approval? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes on item nine. Passed unanimously. I have items from council. Pat, you want to get us started?
Yes.
All right, Skip?
Yes. I would like to thank the Central Oklahoma Troopers Association for having me as their guest at their annual banquet this past Friday night at the Embassy Suites. And it was part of a historical presentation of recognizing the fact that some of us have lived long enough to see some real history in Oklahoma City, and Oklahoma, and in the United States. And I, for one, was, have been fortunate to see some of the major changes in our city and in our state as it relates to integration. And at the banquet, amazing how short time is, and it seems like it's been a long time, but really it's just a short period of time that I remember when there wasn't any African-Americans on the Oklahoma Highway Patrol. And I also remember that when I was in law school, my graduate, my first year in law school, that I got to meet the first two African-American troopers that was hired in the state of Oklahoma. Trooper Johnson and Trooper Harrison. And Trooper Harrison was recognized as the second African-American trooper to be hired under the commission of, Commissioner Waya as a highway patrolman for the state of Oklahoma, and was given a mandate to assist in finding other qualified African-Americans to serve on the, or to make application to be candidates for the Oklahoma Highway Patrol. And so this organization is called the Oklahoma Central Troopers Association. Trooper Timmons and many of the other individuals are very involved in working with programs in the community as it relates to crime and saving some of the childrens from being, you know, attracted to some of the bad elements in our society. One of the recipients of their community award was the YMCA, Ms. Jan Perry, and her husband was there to receive their award. And one of the other recipients was a graduate from Southeast High School, Shanetta Muston, who received a thousand-dollar scholarship award from the organization. She's a freshman at Baylor University and a graduate of Southeast High School. You know, so I'd just like to thank them for inviting me and asking me to be their guest at their banquet last week. And I would just like to say that, you know, we all have witnessed one of the most unfortunate atrocities that you could have in a society. And several weeks ago, I raised the issue of youth and violence in our society and in Oklahoma City in particular. And to ask the question, could we, at some point in time, sit down and have a real, level discussion in reference to youth, violence, and crime in our communities? I think that what we have experienced, it's time for every local body, every state body, and every federal officer, elected officials, policymakers, to sit down and start having a meaningful, rational conversation as it relates to the safety and the welfare of all of our children in this society. This is nothing that can be, I mean, we'll never solve this issue by pointing the fingers at any one person or any one issue. We know that we have a society that has changed, and it's been changing for a long time. And if you look at the Time Magazine's website, dating back to 1963, there's been front-page stories of issues of violence, kids with guns, illegal guns, and has absolutely nothing to do with any one particular organization. It has to do with everything about what our society has become and what we, as elected officials, what we as policymakers, what we as decision-makers are failing to do our part, at least to sit down and have everybody at the table to discuss the social ills that is killing our society.
Thank you, Your Honor. Not to be like our Congress and administration, I'd like to throw out a couple of ideas as we begin looking at our budget for next year. I know we begin in January. And this is not related to Councilman Kelly's comments. I mean, I recognize and I appreciate those comments and agree with them. But I do want to encourage and challenge the staff to try to put together a proposal that would allow for us to continue to hire additional police officers, and perhaps with a goal of forty additional ones, like we were able to do this past year, next year, and the next four years, to get up to a net addition of two hundred police officers within five years. I think that's an important goal. And so even if it requires some type of unique funding, I just think that's an important goal as we begin looking at next year's budget. And secondly, just to continue the request, I do think, as was brought out this morning, additional sidewalks are important for the continued growth and improvement of Oklahoma City. And just like with these police officers, challenge the staff to find funding for additional sidewalks, even if it requires some type of unique or innovative method to fund those. And then finally, now that we got that behind us, I'd like to wish everybody on the council and the city staff and all the citizens a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Steve?
I'd like to join the Merry Christmas thing for everybody. It's a real honor to work in this place. With the quality of the staff we have, and I just, part of my Merry Christmas is the appreciation for the kind of quality of the support we have here. I'd also like to support David's idea about forty police officers. I think that's a minimum we ought to look at, in light of what's going on, in light of how short we are. I think that ought to be a minimum. We look at another forty. I would like to, I would like to actually get to four, get to two hundred quicker than the five years it'll take us to do it, the way we're presently doing. If we have to reallocate funds, then we just have to reallocate funds. I think the need is really growing. I don't go anywhere, especially in the outlying areas of my ward, that I don't hear comments that we don't even, we don't even use Oklahoma City Police Department anymore. Our response times are so long, we just call the county sheriff. I mean, that's happening in the south part of Ward Five. I know what's happening in my ward. I wouldn't be a bit surprised if it doesn't happen in Seven and other wards also. But I know it's happening in at least those three wards, I know. So I think we've got to take the bull by the horns and be responsible for that public safety portion.
Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just say ditto on the additional police officers of Ward Three. We'd like to see additional police officers added. We're very appreciative for the forty this year, and we certainly endorse David's idea for a minimum of forty more next year. That being said, last week I had the privilege of attending several meetings that show the continued progress that's going on in Oklahoma City. I was a visitor over in your ward, David, at the Moore Norman VOTEC at Southwest 134th and Penn, where they had an excellent symposium put on by Bob Carter and the manufacturers of Oklahoma City, where they invited in the legislators, and they had a very open and frank discussion about the role of the legislature and what they could do to promote manufacturing in central Oklahoma and Oklahoma as a state in general. That was very informative. And then And then got over to Peets Ward on Friday. I was invited by Dr. Jerry Stewart to participate in a vignette -- a showet, excuse me, on what they were going to do with the new facility that Oklahoma Community College has purchased some property over in the Capitol Hill area. And that's an exciting potential there. And the people that were there, the potential users of that facility, were extremely excited about all the different programs that could be offered to our population headquarter out of that location. And then Friday night, I'd like to thank the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce for hosting my wife and I at their annual Christmas gala. And the conversation that we had at the table, again, determining, discussing, excuse me, manufacturing and how Hispanic manufacturing might play a -- increase the role in the development of South Oklahoma City was very beneficial. With that, I'd like to conclude by wishing everybody a Merry Christmas and a God-blessed New Year. Thank you, Your Honor.
Ed?
Two things. One, on the Boulevard, I don't want to talk about the Boulevard. I'm prepared to -- I know I'm on my own there, and that's fine. We don't get everything we want. I do -- I have made a request that I hear about the idea of the grid and then some permutations of the software, and I haven't heard anything back. But really, I just want to make a request as I look at some of the statements over the last week from some of the opposition about the federal NEPA process. I do have some concerns. I have some concerns about statements that have been made by the council and staff through the media that were at public meetings. And I do have some questions. And I do -- we did hear from Elizabeth Romero about a week ago that an environmental assessment's been started. Whether that mutated into an environmental impact assessment would be an entirely different thing with different timelines. And so what I would request is that, I think we're going to take this up on January 8th, I would request that we ask the Federal Highway Administration, the local officials, either Elizabeth Romero or Ivan Moreau, to come and talk to us and explain to us the NEPA process. Because I'm not sure that we have a solid understanding of that process. And I'd like them to talk about environmental assessments, environmental impact assessments, what our vote as a council means in the process and how it all goes together. I'd just ask that one of those two individuals be invited. Second, I want to extend my holiday message and expand on some of the things Skip was talking about, in just a little different way. Let me start by giving my condolences to Steve Lackmeyer. I know that he is suffering, and I wish him some moments of peace. Many people are suffering during the holidays. We've been taught since we were child's children that this is tis the season to be jolly, but I just want one public official to acknowledge that it's very hard to be jolly for a lot of people. It's a very difficult time for so many people. And that's okay. And I think that part of the problem is we think that everybody else is happier than we are. Everything tends to be amplified, loss and grieving, fear and resentment, anger and pain. I had this divorce attorney many years ago, and I remain stunned when she told me that she couldn't take a vacation from Christmas till the middle of January because the phones start ringing off the hook right after Christmas, and then it builds up, and then statistically the most common date to file for divorce is January 8. And it is -- there's a lot of domestic violence. There's a lot of conflict. There's a lot of anger in homes, and it all kind of comes out over the next two weeks. A lot of depression, some people, some suicides. I was -- I guess I would say in response to that to everyone, just stay strong if you're struggling. January will come, as it always does. Do your best, easier said than done, not to hurt yourself or others. I was very saddened by the events on Friday, as Skip was alluding to. I worked as a surgeon in Harlem for a number of years, and I treated a lot of gunshot wounds. I understand why it costs about $14 billion a year in health care to treat gunshot wounds. I would ask that those families that are struggling over the next couple of weeks that have firearms, to just think about, not to do, but just think about possibly, if your family is in a lot of conflict, if you have a son or daughter that's majorly depressed or has issues, or most importantly, if there's drugs and alcohol being used in the house. A lot of people are focusing in on mental illness, but it's important to remember that the overwhelming majority of those who are mentally ill are not violent. It's a different story when you combine drugs and alcohol and firearms, where it's much more common. And so given that studies show that a firearm in the home is more than 40 times as likely to hurt or kill a family member as to stop a crime, and that a gun in the home increases the likelihood of homicide three times and the likelihood of suicide five times, I'd ask that if your family struggled, just think about removing the guns, just for a little bit. You don't have to give them up. But think about putting them in storage until things settle down, and maybe that's past the holidays. I think that we all have to acknowledge that we have a Second Amendment, which has been definitively interpreted to read that individuals have a right to possess firearms, and that the overwhelming majority of gun owners in Oklahoma City are highly responsible. But I think we also have to acknowledge that just as we can't know what power and nature firearms will have 200 years from now, the framers of the Second Amendment couldn't understand the consequences of the kind of firepower and firearms that we have and that we're dealing with in our cities today. They couldn't have understood the consequences of high-velocity semi-automatic assault rifles with high-capacity magazines carrying bullets designed to stay within the body and disperse all the energy throughout the body to create maximum tissue damage. My feeling, which was well articulated by our police chief, Bill Citi, was after one of our police officers was repeatedly shot with an AR-15 assault rifle, is that there's no place for military-grade weaponry in our beloved city. Thank you.
Gary?
I too want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a happy and a safe holiday. I think we've been getting some notices that we could have some severe weather moving in around Christmas time, and I just ask everybody to be prepared for that and try to stay as safe as they can.
All right. City manager reports? All right, citizens to be heard. Come on up, Jeff. Is anybody else signed up?
Mr. Mayor, Council, my name is Chef Bezdek. I reside at 1015 North Broadway, Suite 120, in downtown Oklahoma City, in Sub-Unit Maps 3 Transit Subcommittee. And I just felt like I had to come to this meeting, and I will try to make it very quick since it's close to lunch. I heard no -- I can't attend every council meeting, so I watched them online at work and heard Eric Minger's presentation regarding Project 180. And a surge of panic ran through me when he started talking about how short of a timeline we're on for expending the funds in front of Santa Fe Station. For that matter, the streetcar project in Maps wasn't mentioned once. The intermodal hub was mentioned. But I -- in fact, the Transit Subcommittee wasn't even aware that we received a $750,000 grant to redo that street. We hadn't been informed of that. So I'm just showing up today because, you know, we're put in place to provide oversight. That is why we're there for you. And I just want to tell you that the Transit Subcommittee will work very hard to try to get our work done so that that street construction project can fit in with our transit project. There were some code words used in that presentation, one being that they're only going to go up to the property line. That's all the street's going to handle, that it's not going to go past the property line into the intermodal hub area. Well, presumably, even if the route changes, we will still have a streetcar directly in front of the intermodal hub. I mean, there's very little doubt about that. So having those things integrate with Robinson, a key street in the discussion, and some of the other streets, we were told there was enough time. We had an obligation to Devon to meet a timeline. And so we let that argument go. Well, I'm here to tell you that we're going to work hard on our end to make sure that we're doing our part not to prevent those projects from being integrated. Even the approaches to the intermodal hub for bus infrastructure, for passenger infrastructure, the pedestrian connectivity to the hub, and how all that is designed is critical, absolutely critical. Wednesday is a very important meeting in which we establish our project requirements for the entire program. And hopefully, when those project requirements make it out of our committee and to the Oversight Board and onto you for approval, then we can let loose our consultants on collaborating. One other thing that I would point out is that the engineers from ODOT told us that they had hoped to be in final design right now, in December. And because of the public process that has gone on about the overall Boulevard project, that design process has been somewhat protracted. And we would encourage, as a committee, we've stressed this as a committee, that any opportunity to integrate the streetcar into the ODOT plan in front of the new convention center and the park would be an opportunity to potentially save taxpayer money, whether it's in their project or our project, and certainly mitigate detrimental environmental impacts to people in the area by having a duplicative construction process. So we're scrambling, and like I said, our project requirements come up tomorrow at 3:30 at the 420 Main Building on the 10th floor. And we're talking about programming for the overall streetcar project and also for Santa Fe Station. One thing that I'm personally adding into the project programming and recommending for approval is a Phase 1 assessment of that facility, should we be able to obtain it, so we can immediately make improvements to the intermodal hub and try to make it functional from day one. Just want to point out that we missed a lot of opportunities for the past few years because so many projects were on a different timeline than ours. This budget wasn't even mentioned in his presentation, and I think it's absolutely critical that council be advised as we proceed forward if the Oversight Committee sees any opportunities that are being missed. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Jim?
Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to let Jeff sit down and let the next gentleman set up. Go ahead and ask your question while you come up.
A quick question, just because he's talking about the meeting tomorrow, because it may come up. Can you talk about, is design-build, we talked about that in Boston. I know that there's some talk in the Subcommittee. Does state law allow design-build as an option for the streetcar?
I don't know if I can answer that. There are some restrictions on design-build. As we talked about it, there's a lot of different ways to do that. There's design-build. There's a couple, three different approaches on that, and I don't know that at this point.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff. Yes, sir, come on forward. We will need your name and address for the record, please.
God bless you, Mayor. God bless you, city councilwoman. My name is Charles Jordan, and my address is Box 57077, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73157. And under the grace of Almighty God, I am here to invite you to come, please come, and meet the Spirit and the Bride, and to partake of the water of life freely. I am a member of the Church of God World Mission Society, and it is located in over 2,000 countries, 2,000 congregations around the world, and over 150 countries on 12 continents. And I want to share with you that the Bride, which is not only in the Scriptures, but also our Heavenly Mother, the Bible testifies that we have a Heavenly Father as well as a Heavenly Mother. And one of the basic principles of nature is that all life comes from the female. Birds, fish, animals, life comes from the female. So just like the Lord's Prayer, when we pray, "Our Father, which art in heaven," this is implying that there's a male image with children. And so in order to have children, you have to have a female. And so this is what the Church of God believes, that not only do we have God the Father, but also God the Mother. And there's a time and a season for everything. And now is the time for the Heavenly Mother to be revealed. And the things that on earth that we can see that are visible, the physical things that we can see are a copy of the reality which is in heaven. So we see here on earth a Father, and we see children. That's the copy on earth. The reality is in heaven, Heavenly Father, children of God, and Heavenly Mother.
We really appreciate you coming down. We're going to have to move on, though.
Thank you. I want to invite you all to visit the website, which is wwwenglish.watv.org. English.watv.org. God bless you. Thank you.
God bless you. We have executive session. We'll be back.